Twenty twenty-five, first thing on the agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Good one, Doc.
Commissioner Van Haas. Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Next thing is introductions. To my far left is Brad Davis, our planning manager. Rachel Nosberg, our deputy clerk. And in the audience, we have Marty Schmidt, zoning manager. Greg Wagner is principal planner, Nathan Hall, associate planner, and also our county commissioner, Tom Wolf here. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approval of December, December ninth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. Any changes or deletions or additions? Not to have a motion on the minutes. No move.
No move.
Yep.
A second.
You got a second? Okay. We have a motion to second approve the minutes of December ninth. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
On favor, say nay.
One abstention.
One abstention. Minutes are approved. Okay, the one agenda item other than electing officers is a variance for PL number twenty twenty-four dash zero seven three, request to approve a variance from the maximum forty-five foot structure height to seventy feet to install air quality control system for Demcon HZI Bioenergy LLC applicant and Brian Rock Products property owner in section twenty-eight of Louisville Township. And Greg, you're gonna walk us through this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So, on the screen is the site location map of the subject property in section twenty-eight of Louisville Township. So, for locational purposes, the site is located just west of US Highway one sixty-nine, north of County Road fourteen, and then to the west is land that's part of the National Wildlife Refuge. North of the site are other parcels owned by Demcon as part of their construction demolition landfill. So, Demcon has submitted an application for conditional use permit to construct and operate an anaerobic digester with gasification and biochar technology. The facility will be located on this twenty-six acre site in section twenty-eight. The property is zoned I-two heavy industrial. Anaerobic digester is a facility and technology that takes in organic materials such as food waste, animal waste, yard tree waste, and other organic rich materials, and produces renewable natural gas and biochar. The purpose and benefit of an anaerobic digester is to divert wastes from landfills and create renewable energy products. The byproducts, as mentioned, are renewable natural gas, which will be delivered into local commercial gas pipelines, and biochar, which will be marketed to businesses for additives in their products. Biochar is a carbon-rich charcoal, most commonly used as a soil amendment to aid in soil aeration, improve soil productivity, reduce soil greenhouse gas emissions, as well as used in water filtration systems, and newer into concrete additives. So, I wanted to present to the board a quick overview of a digester, but I want to preface my presentation by saying the conditional use permit for Demcon's biochar will be on the Planning Commission agenda. Mark Paul with Demcon is here and has a PowerPoint presentation, which will go into much more detail on what a digester is, how they operate. So, the requests before this board right now is for the height variance. So, any questions specific to how the digester operates, I would recommend deflecting to the CUP discussion, but I wanted to give you a site overview. So, the digester facility consists of a central building that would house the waste in the receiving pit. So, you can see on the site plan, there's the pit bunker, and they show how the trucks would do, semi-trucks would deliver the waste materials to the site. The two digesters are located south of the main building, so the material's brought in, and then it's piped over to the digesters where it goes through that process. And then the gas material is then piped over to holding tanks on the site, and the solid waste are piped back to the main building where it goes through the biochar technology. So, then there's heating and other activities that go on in that main building that create that biochar after the gas is pulled off. So, the application narrative talks about how they're gonna, you know, use this facility, and the process is mainly for odor and noise abatement, which is kind of what we're gonna be discussing here with the variants. Demcon and their partners have toured many of these anaerobic digesters throughout the world and throughout the US. There's some mainly in California and other areas. So, they researched, put a lot of research into this technology to look at how they can address a lot of the common concerns, which again would be odor and noise. So, this is, again, the site, and just to re-familiarize, to the north is land owned by Brian Rock, which Demcon has a purchase agreement with. As Brian Rock mines that area, and they've now mined into the portion of this site, the intent is that they would mine the aggregates materials out of the site and then reclaim it for Demcon to then put in their digester. So, they've been going through this process for quite a while, and prior to the submittal to the county for the conditional use permit and the variants, Demcon had to submit an environmental assessment worksheet to the MPCA. So, that process happened last summer where it went through the environmental review process. Another component of that kind of happening concurrently was an air quality permit also issued by the MPCA. So, on, and that went through a public hearing process with the MPCA. There were some informational meetings on that, but here's the permit that was issued by the MPCA in September of twenty twenty-four. So, this permit issues them an air quality permit. The air quality permit is four hundred-plus pages in length, so there's a lot of information in there. But essentially, one of the outcomes and the reason this variance request is before you tonight is to comply with state and federal air emission regulations. There are certain things that Demcon will need to do to this building. So, one component of the site facility is an air quality, air quality control system building. And so, there's some emissions that go up, so they need to put certain equipment in that building, and then they have to have a stack above that for emissions that are sent off from the facility. So, this is essentially what the facility, this is a building elevation, so this shows all four sides of the building. What we're really talking about here is the air quality building, which is this component right here with this fifteen-foot stack. And so, that has scrubbing technology to filter out things that are not allowed to be emitted into air, the general air, whoops. So, this is just a overview of the site facility. As mentioned, the pit bunkers are here, that material's then sent to the digester, the gas is pulled off, and then the solids are sent back to the building where it's turned into biochar. But this, this diagram is kind of a zoomed-in version of what I just showed you. So, the request for variance here is for this air quality control system building. So, the heavy industrial district has a forty-five-foot maximum building height. The entire facility, the other buildings all meet that forty-five-foot height, but due to the equipment in this air quality control system building, that building is being proposed at fifty feet, and then the stack above the building is another fifteen feet, so a total of sixty-five. So, the requested variance would be essentially a twenty-foot variance from our height requirement. And the full intent of this is to meet state and federal guidelines as part of their approved air permit. And this is just another overview of the site. One of the reasons staff is supporting the variance in addition to the air permit requires it is as the mining activity happens here, Brian Rock will mine the aggregate material out, and then the site will be reclaimed. And it's probably hard to see the numbers here, but the finished floor elevation of the digester facility will be at an elevation of seven hundred and fifty-one. US Highway one sixty-nine, on the north end, right here, is at an elevation of seven eighty, and as you go south, it goes down to like seven seventy. So, what I was trying to illustrate there is that the roadway for visual impact will actually be looking down into the site after it's reclaimed, so they're actually depressing the facility below the surrounding road grade, so that the building itself will be set down about twenty feet from the road level. So, in your packet, this is aerial, or this is a rendering of what the facility will look like with one sixty-nine here on the backside, and you can kind of see there's a slope here, again, to depress the building kind of below the average grade. So, while we're asking for, or they're asking for a twenty-foot variance, we're actually setting the facility down twenty feet below ground. So, the building itself will generally be lower than all other industrial buildings in the area. And then, as part of their landscaping plan along one sixty-nine for screening, they're proposing rows of spruce evergreen trees, and then a second row of like maple trees, and then along the south side of the facility. So, they're putting a lot of effort into lessening the visual impact of this facility overall, but then also recognizing that they're requesting a variance for that air quality building. They're also setting that down. Here's another rendering from the south. So, again, the grade around the site is gonna be higher, so with the trees and the landscaping, once those reach maturity, a lot of this facility won't actually be seen. It's hard to see the change here, but this is the new overpass bridge looking north on one sixty-nine. So, if you focus right in this area, here's the new screen that they're gonna have. So, while you can see kind of into the site now, once, once that screening goes in, it'll be pretty, pretty solid. Lastly, the applicants met with Louisville Township last Thursday, and the township did recommend approval of the, this is an all-encompassing recommendation, but they did recommend the approval of the variance to sixty-five feet. And Mark Paul from Demcon is here. I believe I saw some township representatives here. I would stand for any questions.
Mr. Wagner, thank you for that presentation, but I just had a question, and it's just a wording thing. It says a negative EAW declaration for the PCA. So, they must went through the EIS and said, "You don't need to do an EAW, because they're satisfied."
No, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it actually is the opposite. The EAW is the first review, and then what they do, what they do is they make a negative declaration for the need for an EIS. So, it goes the other way.
So, they don't have to do the EIS?
They do not.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair. So, take me back for a minute. I think I understand this. There's a twenty-foot variance from what we have, and the twenty-foot variance is because they have to build some height into that facility in order to get rid of the gases that go with this biodigest system. Just say that again. I mean, is that why this, is that why the building is higher?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, yes. So, as I indicated, Demcon, and they'll probably touch on this in their presentation, but they've done a lot of research and visited a lot of plants, you know, digesters that are in operation to look at how these facilities function, and the big thing is, you know, we don't want any greenhouse gases or other things being emitted into the air. So, the technology that they've settled on for their air quality control system necessitates the additional height just to meet the state and federal guidelines.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I know that this is in the Shakopee Fire District. Shakopee Fire Marshal was involved in this, and is aware, they're aware of this height on this building?
Yep. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Van Haas, yeah, I think, I think I listed that in the CUP report, because we did receive comments. Generally, the building code and state fire code kind of go hand in hand. So, yes, this information was forwarded to Tom Pitchneider, the City of Shakopee Fire Marshal, and I know he has a relationship with Mr. Paul on his other operations out there, too.
Mr. Chair. So, I have a question regarding the specific height. Why only fifteen feet above the recommended height?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hussein, so I think the fifteen feet is, you know, when they researched the technology to use to meet the requirements of like the EPA and state air quality. The stack that you see here on the screen, the fifteen-foot stack, was the minimum that they needed. They didn't, they didn't want to go any higher than they needed to. So, I think initially, it was discussed on potentially going up to seventy feet, but they were able to, you know, meet it by only using a fifteen-foot stack.
Okay. And what is the distance from the highway, from one sixty-nine? How far is this?
So, it's, it's several hundred feet, because this area here, just from the highway to the property line, is like two hundred-some feet, and so, we're probably five, six hundred feet away. So, quite a distance.
And from the neighborhood, any other neighborhood?
From additional property lines, I mean, the structures are all meeting the required setbacks. The county actually owns this sliver of land adjacent to Red Rock Drive, but, I mean, that's probably another two, three hundred feet from that road. But as you can see on the aerial, to the south is a yard waste recycling facility, to the west is the National Wildlife Refuge, Minnesota Renaissance Festival's up here, and to the north, that's the current Brian Rock Quarry, which will become part of Demcon's construction landfill. So, there's not really a lot adjacent to this that's gonna have a visual impact.
One last thing. This building and all of this activity is gonna be below one sixty-nine, generally speaking. Do you have any, or did you have any questions about the fact that because it's below, what comes out of that stack is gonna be something that's more at ground level? It's not gonna be above ground level. It's really gonna be at ground level because, to start with, the building is below grade?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, yes. So, when you look at the elevation of one sixty-nine in the northeast corner, the elevation of the road is at seven eighty. The elevation of the, the ground level of the digester facility will be seven fifty-one. So, it's approximately thirty feet down to begin with. The building is forty-five feet tall, so, I mean, there would be fifteen feet of the building that you'd probably see, but that's the purpose of the double row of trees that are being planted along there. They want to do whatever they can to, I mean, we, we have other industrial buildings along the one sixty-nine corridor, you know, the rock, or the patio manufacturing companies and other things. So, those are visible, but they're doing whatever they can to kind of help screen this because it's a unique use and, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
I got one question. There's two different staff reports, and one says that public notices were sent out for five hundred feet away, and one says a half mile. I'm assuming it was a half mile that before the public hearing was tonight.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pika, the statutory requirement for a variance for public notification is five hundred feet from the property line. The statutory requirement for a plat is a half mile. So, that's why there's two different notices, but we sent out to the half mile. So, probably for a variance, probably more people were notified of this than normal, because they would have been notified for the plat in CUP. Thank you.
Any other questions from this board? Not this is a public hearing. Anybody like to address this board regarding this variance? Please come to the podium, sign in, state your name, and address the board. Does anybody like to address the board? Not? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? No move. A motion to second close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Aye. On favor, say nay. Okay, and what are your wishes on this variance?
Mr. Chair, based on the variance criteria listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the variance from the required forty-five maximum building height to sixty-five feet for Demcon HZI Bioenergy to install required air quality equipment.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion to second approve the variance. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Non-favor, say nay. Variance has been approved. Last thing on our list to do is election of officers for the Board of Adjustment, and I'd like to open up the nomination for Chair of the Board.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Commissioner Huber to be Board, to be Chair of the Board of Adjustment.
Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Not, motion to close nomination.
Second.
A motion to second, uh, close nominations. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Non-favor, nay. Cool, okay. Vote on the nomination. So, we have a vote on that. Anybody?
I move that we vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, uh, to second approve. Mr. Huber has supported Adjustment Chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On favor, it's, and now it's universal, so it's all seven votes. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is open nomination for Vice Chair of Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Donna Hentges for Vice Chair.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? If, not, a motion to close the nomination.
Second.
A motion to second close nominations. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Non-favor, say nay. Okay, your vote on the Vice Chair.
I make a motion that we vote? Second.
A motion, uh, and second, approve Donna Hentges as Vice Chair of Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Non-favor, say nay. It's universal again, all seven. Last thing we have is a nomination for Secretary of Board of Adjustment. Any nominations for that?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Commissioner Pika to be.
Historically, we do, Rachel.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I knew that and I forgot it. So, I'm gonna nominate Rachel to be our secretary.
Do I have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do you have any other nominations? Not, I have a motion to close the nomination for Secretary of Board.
Second.
Motion to second to close, uh, nomination for Secretary of Board, and what is your vote on the nomination for Rachel?
I move that we vote.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Non-favors, say nay. Universal, Rachel, you're lucky again. Yeah, I know. Okay, anything else, Brad, from this board? Do I have a motion to close the Board of Adjustment? No move. I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Non-favor, say nay. Board of Adjustment is closed. Moving on to planning.
I call to order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we will start this evening with our roll call.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Van Haas.
Here.
Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Also, in introductions, Brad Davis, our planning manager, is at the end of the podium. Next to him is Rachel Nosberg, our next deputy clerk to the board. In the audience is Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our principal planner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and our county board member, Tom Wolf, is over here in the audience as well. Our first item is approval of December ninth, twenty twenty-four Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. The commission has all been sent a copy of the minutes. In opportunity to review them, are there any conditions or additions or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Huber, or Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Huber. I was gonna go with Commissioner Pika, but both. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Our next item is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are listed or considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and being enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission Board member or a member of the public so requests, in which events the item will be moved from the consent agenda to be considered separately. At this time, I am opening the public hearing to the consent agenda. So, anyone would like, we have one item this evening on the consent agenda. It's number PL twenty twenty-four dash sixty-eight, request to approve the rezoned and preliminary plat of Rice Gruff Farm Number Two, Kilvy and Brianna Rice Gruff applicants, and Jeffrey and Pamela Rice Gruff property owners in section fifteen of Sand Creek Township. That's the only item on our consent agenda this evening. If we approve the consent agenda, that item will be approved. Would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Seeing that no one liked it removed, this time I will close, or look for a motion to close the consent agenda.
No move. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
This time, I also entertain a motion to approve the one item on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as written, recognizing that the town board has recommended approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This item has been approved. Our first public hearing this evening is number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four, request to approve the preliminary plat and conditional plat permit of Demcon HZI Bioenergy LLC, Demcon Companies LLC applicant, and Brian Rock Products property owner in section twenty-eight of Louisville Township. And Mr. Wagner will be making the staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So, on the screen is the site location, again, the subject property in section twenty-eight Louisville Township. So, as indicated, on the west side of the prop, or excuse me, on the east side of the property is US Highway one sixty-nine. To the north is the Brian Rock Quarry, future Demcon landfill. South is Waste Management Yard and Waste Recycling Facility, and then to the west is the US Fish and Wildlife Refuge and the Minnesota Renaissance Festival. As indicated, the property is zoned I-two heavy industrial district. The application before you tonight is both for preliminary plat and conditional use permit. So, currently, Demcon owns, if you can see the black line cutting through the property, Demcon owns the southern portion of this site. Brian Rock, who is mining the quarry, owns the other fifteen acres of the site, but the two entities have a purchase agreement that once Brian Rock mines out that area, Demcon would purchase it and then use it for their proposed digester facility. Here's the proposed preliminary plat. So, the preliminary plat shows two lots. Lot one is kind of the larger twenty-six acre piece. That's where the Demcon, or the digester would be located. Lot two here on the eastern side of the property is approximately four acres, and actually will be, or the intended use for lot two is for the landfill. There's future stormwater needs as the landfill progresses to the south, so that lot will actually, at some point, be incorporated with the property to the north. It was separate because the corridor on the north side here was one hundred and forty-fifth Street East, or West, excuse me. Most of that corridor, since the, the County Road fourteen interchange and new bridge went in, this road is no longer used really as a public road. Okay, so on the map, or on the screen now is, again, the site location map with the Demcon digester property highlighted in blue. And this was to Commissioner Pika's question earlier. A lot of public information has gone into this proposal. Starting last year, Demcon was mandated under state statute to submit an environmental assessment worksheet to the MPCA. The MPCA was the regulatory government unit that went, that guided the EAW through the review process. So that information was submitted to the MPCA and just ahead of the thirty-day mandatory public comment period, Demcon held a public informational open house. That was on June twenty-seventh, which again was just ahead of that thirty-day public comment period. And similar to the EAW, as we discussed with the Board of Adjustment, they also were required to get an MPCA air quality permit. That also required a public review process. So the Demcon held a second public informational meeting on August fifth, twenty twenty-four. So there were two public open houses. Now, they, they sent out notification of that one quarter mile, so about half the radius here. One quarter mile is the requirement for a conditional use permit. For this request tonight, because there was a plat involved, statutorily, we, the county, sent out one half mile, which is the red ring on your map. But I just wanted the, the commission to know that there was a lot of public outreach prior to them even submitting to the county. That happened last summer. Scott County staff was aware of those applications. We commented on the EAW. We actually published notification of those public informational meetings on our county website and social media. So there was a great attempt to get the public in this area aware of what was being proposed here. The CUP application narrative that they submitted provides a very comprehensive overview of the extent of the materials that will be processed here in the digester facility. The majority of the waste hauling and processing will be done in the enclosed structure on the site. Mainly, that is to control the conditions for incoming waste, noise, and odor. The facility is ten, intended to operate twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, with receiving hours between six AM and seven PM, Monday through Saturday. The estimated trips for traffic for employees and hauling trucks to be between ten to thirty per day, depending on site activities. So to give you some context of the change in use here, the same site being mined by Brian Rock, when Brian Rock made their application for their mining IUP back in twenty twenty-one, Brian Rock estimated four hundred and twenty-one trips per day. So as this digester is developed and the mining migrates off the site, the traffic will be greatly reduced to this facility from, you know, over four hundred down to less than thirty per day. All equipment, building, and site design has been done to minimize noise and odor as required by the MPCA air permit. And as we discussed during the variance, to provide visual buffer to adjacent properties and US Highway one sixty-nine. The stormwater, this area slopes generally from north to south. So they've identified, it's called out anaerobic digester pond, a large infiltration basin on the south, a west pond, some emergency overflow area. So basically, all the runoff from this site will be going to these engineered ponds on the southern portion of the property. They did identify septic sites in the middle of the parcel also. And I mentioned lot two. Lot two, as you can see here on the civil plan, is essentially proposed to entirely be future stormwater management for the landfills, but that would be a separate review process. This is the landscaping plan. So as I mentioned, they're gonna do a row of evergreens and then a row of maples along the eastern boundary, along the south, and then right along the southern perimeter of the site. So before I turn it over to Mark Paul from Demcon, and as I said, he'll have a PowerPoint presentation to give you an idea of more of what a digester is, I just want to note final, some final staff comments. Myself, Kate Simbajik is here from our Environmental Services Department, if you would have any questions of us. But as outlined in the staff report, county staff in Louisville Township were introduced to the project in early twenty twenty-four. And as I mentioned, we were involved in the review of the EAW. County staff from Environmental Services have provided two review memos that were in your packet where they recommended approval of the plat and of the conditional use permit. And they will be working with the applicants on their solid waste license, which is considered by the county board separately. Natural Resources staff have provided comments on the civil plans and the stormwater plans. Those comments will need to be addressed prior to county board, but there is nothing too significant in those comments. County building inspections provided the applicant with general comments. They will review the final building plans as they come in for permit, but they provided some good comments on commercial industrial buildings and development. And as indicated, the plans and information have been provided to the City of Shakopee Fire Marshal, who has also been in contact with county staff and the applicant. Staff is recommending approval. And on the screen, you see the recommendation from Louisville Township where they recommended approval of the plat and the conditional use permit as well. But at this point, I will turn it over to Mark Paul and his team, and he'll go through his PowerPoint on the digester.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. Thanks for allowing us to present here tonight. I think Greg did a great job of just kind of presenting the project, kind of from a high-level overview between the variance and his intro tonight. I'm gonna take a little time tonight and kind of dive into a little more of the details. What exactly is this digester that we've been talking about and go into a little more details on it so you guys and the rest of the public is well informed on the project. As, as Greg said, we've been working on this project for quite some time. And I'm gonna start with just kind of introducing kind of the project team, and then I'll dive into the details of exactly what this looks like. You know, and Greg let everybody know where the project site is, just to talk briefly about the project partners. So, you know, myself, Mark Paul, and Jason House, my brother-in-law, were the two owners of Demcon. I've also got Bill Keegan here, who's part of the Demcon team, who's worked extensively on this project. And then Tom Grotz with Canadivia, formerly HCI, is with us as well. And that's the project partners for this. And we feel we've got a really good, robust team with this. So Demcon, I think we've, we've been in front of this board before on, on different projects that we've worked on in the past. We're a third-generation family-owned company, providing waste processing, recycling, and disposal needs for the, the local community in the Twin Cities metro area for a number of years now. And our project partner, Canadivia, is a global company that provides solid waste technology from waste to energy, anaerobic digesters, gas upgrading systems around the world. And so between the two of us, we really feel that we have a good project team. You know, some of the benefits we're, and why we're coming together as a joint venture is, you know, we've got Demcon on the side. We are, you know, local, family-owned. We know how to run facilities. We know the Twin Cities marketplace. We know how to run facilities. We, we've been here, plan to stay here. And then Canadivia comes in and they provide the engineering, the expertise, because, you know, we, Demcon, have not ever operated anaerobic digester before. Canadivia not only supplies the equipment, does the engineering design, this also isn't uncommon for them to be part ownership of the ongoing ownership and the operation of the facility. So they're not only the people providing the technology, they're also the people helping us run the facility. So we feel this is a really good, robust partnership that is gonna provide a successful project. Next, I'll, I'll just jump into kind of part, one question we want to answer is the why. Why are we doing an anaerobic digester? What's driving this? What's been happening? You know, we're in the solid waste industry, and so, you know, we keep up to a lot of these things as they go. But, you know, a lot of the, the things that happen, you know, from a legislative and policy perspective, not everybody's aware of. And that's really what's driving a lot of what we're doing. There's a number of waste reduction and recycling goals that have been put forth by our legislature and the MPCA. Some of those that this project has helped meeting is there's a seventy-five percent recycling goal by twenty thirty of all waste. That seventy-five percent of it's recycled. A fifteen percent waste reduction goal by twenty thirty, one hundred percent clean energy by twenty forty, and carbon neutral by twenty fifty. So these are all initiatives, laws on the books right now that, you know, both, you know, public and private entities, you know, we all have together, need to figure out, you know, how are we gonna achieve these goals. And also more locally, you know, all of these initiatives that might come down from the MPCA regarding waste reduction, they ultimately go down to the county. So Scott County has a solid waste master plan. And part of that plan is there are certain initiatives to achieve those goals, you know, anaerobic digestion, composting, other recycle initiatives are all things that Scott County has recognized as appropriate technology to try to achieve these goals. Just to dive back, Greg touched on a few of these things, but just to kind of touch on the, the chronology that we've, of kind of how long we've been working on this. We internally, you know, started working on this in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when some of these policies were starting to come forth. You know, we've always thought of ourselves as a company who, you know, what are the market needs and how can we provide a solution? And, you know, a lot of these initiatives were starting to come, and we, we saw some of these laws being passed. And so we started internally researching it, do a few facility tours, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. We actually engaged with Scott County in twenty nineteen, received a end-market grant for end-market studies. So if you're gonna take food waste and what are you gonna do with it? You can produce electricity, you can produce natural gas. There's a variety of different energies that you can produce from anaerobic digester. And so we did an end-market study, because, you know, you can't have a facility if you don't have a place to, to deliver the end product. So we started there and determined renewable natural gas was, was more than likely the path of the project. We've done a, a number of reference, facility reference tours. We went to Jang Coping, Sweden, Botorrel, Spain, couple of facilities in California, facility in Pennsylvania, facility in Indiana. That's kind of the Demcon side. Obviously, our project partner has, you know, hundred facilities around the world that are referenced as well. But these are the ones that we specifically saw. In particular, Jang Coping, Sweden, because that was a similar climate, similar environment. And, you know, it, it's, we went to see facilities in California. They work, they great, they perform. But we really wanted to see one in the very similar climate to Minnesota, just to understand what the weather constraints we have. Obviously, we're reminded of that tonight. And with this being a twenty-four-seven operation, we, we needed to kind of go and see it and look at it. And so we saw a very similar facility operate ourselves. And then Greg touched on it. We, we did an EAW. I believe we, we submitted that maybe December of twenty twenty-three, went through the environmental assessment worksheet. I know that was part of your packet. There's a pretty robust finding of fact regarding the project and the negative declaration to do any further study. And then in addition to that, we, the MPCA required us to obtain an air permit. And so, as Greg said, that's four hundred some pages long, but a very robust and, and significant process for that as well. So, you know, as you guys are fully aware, Scott County, you know, wants to get, you know, the environmental review done prior to doing any of the local permitting. And so that's now why we're sitting here, kind of on the tail end of the project, looking for approval for the conditional use permit. Assuming we're successful with the conditional use permit, we're expecting construction to start later this year. And it's an eighteen to twenty-four month construction schedule. So it's, it's a lot of equipment, a lot of insulation, a lot of mechanicals that have to go in for the facility. Pipeline connection has to be made to the facility. There's, there's a lot of infrastructure that has to be constructed. And we would plan to begin operations in the third quarter of twenty twenty-seven, when we're actually live making renewable natural gas and injecting it in the pipeline. That's the why behind the project. Just kind of some high-level metrics with, with the project. And I'll go into a little more detail of a few of these. But we're receiving seventy-five thousand tons of organic material. A breakdown of that organic material is on your screen. There are thirty thousand tons of source-separated organics. So that would be curbside separated food and organic waste. So different communities have different programs. Some communities are putting it in a bag, taking it to a facility. You take, you sort out this compostable bag. That bag would be delivered to us. Some communities are mixing it with, you know, potentially with yard waste. But that, the source-separated organics would be food waste. Coming majority of that would be from residential homes. Twenty thousand, twenty thousand tons of organic rich materials. So this is a material that is basically the, the fine screenings from your household trash. When you look at where a lot of your, your smaller food waste, what we would call it's the small food waste, and some of the fats, oils, and greases, which have high organic content. So that material is screened out of household trash, and that would be a twenty thousand tons of material coming in. And then fifteen thousand tons of other organic materials. So this would be, you know, like what we would call back of house. So restaurants, schools, hospitals, grocery stores, you know, food that, that is, that is rejected and can't be consumed anymore. That would be part of the feedstock. And then we also need ten thousand tons of yard waste. So this would be leaves, grass, trees, you know, Emerald Ashwara has provided us all plenty of, of feedstock for that. We need that just for, you know, all those materials go in for the proper blend for the facility. And then that's what's coming in. And then what's going out is we're gonna make two hundred thousand MMBTU of renewable natural gas and seventy-five hundred tons of biochar. And biochar is, is, is basically a, you know, pure carbon material. So it's kind of a charcoal-looking material. And this is very common to be used in soil remediation. We're talking to local compound posters in the area now, where they use it for a soil amendment. Water, industrial water filtration is a very common, you know, city treatment plant. So it's a very good filtering media as well. And it also is a, is a, one of the large benefits of the project is the biochar is, is about as good of a project you can have for carbon sequestration to meet climate change goals. I'll go through a couple of pictures here. Greg had a couple of them up already, and then I'll dive into the details of the facility. So this is the reference facility we went to look at in Jang Coping, Sweden, just to get a feel for what, what the, you know, this is what the actual one, you know, are, are, you know, maybe they look at different colors, but this is a, a pretty good depiction of some of the components of ours. And then Greg went through these renderings. We can pull these back up later in the presentation, but just kind of to give you an idea of what this facility will look like. And here's kind of a different viewpoint. And Greg had a few up on the, on the screen before as well. I'm gonna turn to this slide for a little bit. This is a, this isn't exactly our facility, but it's got a lot of components. And it's a good, you know, just kind of pictorial diagram that we can just walk through the process of like what exactly happens. So if we look at page left and working our way right, you can see page left would be what we would call the, the receiving hall. So this is where trucks are coming in. We're sensitive about odor control, so these are high-speed doors. So the doors are always closed. When the truck comes in, it's a high-speed door opens, truck backs in, dumps into a pit, truck pulls out, door closes. And as you can see, it's a, it's a fairly large pit inside the building, and there's an automated crane. That feedstock I mentioned before, it's critical that we take this feedstock and mix it around. So we're, we're taking all the different materials and mixing together. We're, we're basically, you know, we need to keep a consistent recipe. And so basically, take all the ingredients and mix them all together in that receiving hall with an automated crane. Then the crane feeds into a shredder and a screener. This is just to ensure uniform, proper size before we introduce the material into the digester. So it's critical that we just have everything very consistent. And so that's some, the material comes in pretty consistent, but it's kind of the final quality control. Before then, the material is then loaded onto a conveyor. The conveyor then takes the, the raw feedstock and delivers it to the digester. And so the digester, you know, if we just look back, so these two rounded vessels in the background there, and then you can see them outside on the south side of the facility here. So these are inside those structures. It's basically a, a very large, long steel tube. And there's a lo, large shaft inside of it. And so that shaft just has paddles and just moves really very slowly. The conveyor then takes the, the raw feedstock and delivers it to the digester. And so the digester, you know, if we just look back, so these two rounded vessels in the background there, and then you can see them outside on the south side of the facility here. So these are inside those structures, it's basically a very large, long steel tube, and there's a lo- large shaft inside of it. And so that shaft just has paddles and just moves really very slowly. And so the product, it's over, it's about a two week retention time. So it goes in one end of the digester and it takes about two weeks for this material to slowly go through the, the digester. And if you can look at that diagram, I've got another one here, so this is a little zoomed in picture of what the diagram is. It sits about three quarters full. So this is highly organic material, we're in an enclosed system, so it's anaerobic. And so the gas is being produced. So we're basically taking, you know, when you take your pile of leaves in your backyard, and you know, it might take all summer long for that to turn into dirt, we're taking that process and we're doing it about two weeks inside this vessel. And so as, as the material is degrading, it's producing gas. And so the gases is on the open space in the top inside the, the digester. And, sorry, my screen just, does that mean I'm getting long winded?
Nope.
Okay. Or where'd we go? Okay, there we go. So the gas is rising to the top of the digester, we then pull the biogas out of the top. And then if you look back to this larger diagram, the, the yellow pipe with the 11 on the top of it, that then delivers the biogas into what we call the biogas holding tank. That's kind of the domed structure you saw. That's actually a flexible membrane, because, you know, we have a consistent mix, but gas production isn't perfect in a digester, so that allows kind of the ebbs and flows of normal production of gas from the digester. And it has a pretty short retention time in that tank, and then it goes right into the gas upgrading system. So this is where we take the raw biogas from the digester and we clean it and compress it into pipeline quality renewable natural gas. So we clean it, compress it, and inject it into the pipeline. And then that's where kind of transfer happens. Then it becomes Excel Energy, CenterPoint Energy, whoever the utility is that's connecting to it, then that's their gas goes into the pipeline and distributed to, you know, local homes and businesses in the area. So that's what's happened to the gas, then what you have left is you have the digestate in the digester. So we don't take this food waste and turn it into absolutely nothing, we're, we're maximizing the gas production out of it. And then we end up with what we call the digestate. So this is basically what's, what's left over. And so this is, at this point, this is like a slurry. So this is actually pumped through a, you know, 10 inch, 12 inch diameter pipe, it's pumped back into the building into what we call the dewatering room. So in the dewatering room, what we do is we spin, between spinning and pressing, we try to remove as much water as we can out of the digestate, because it's pretty wet at that point. And the water that's removed is either recycled back into the digester or it's hauled off to a wastewater treatment plant. Once the material leaves the, or gets into the dewatering room, it then moves over to the biochar room. And I've got a slide here for the, the high temperature biochar. So this is also known as gasification. So in this process, it's, it's high temperature thermal degradation. So we're taking this what we call the press cake, which is as much water that's removed. And in an enclosed vessel, under high temperature, we're, we're breaking it down to just pure carbon, which is what the biochar is, is left. And so this is where, this is the particular system that was required for the air quality control system that we talked about for the air permit. So this process creates emissions. And so these emissions are, are warm, and then they do have some constituents into it that we need to remove before they're released into the atmosphere. So this was the main reason why we needed to achieve or acquire the air permit. And so the, the air that's coming out of this is then taken into the AQCS system and there's scrubbers and filtration and different things. And, you know, the need for that variance was, it's all equipment that's vertically designed. You can't, you can't do it sideways, you have to do it vertically. And so that's what ultimately created the, the height of that structure. So that's what happens to the air that leaves this process. And then, you know, you see the picture there where the, the biochar is, is basically, it's charcoal. So if you, like literally your campfire, when it, when it goes out the next morning and there's those black pieces, that's, that's what this process creates. And that material is then onsite, it's either bagged probably in super sacks or might be bulk loaded into a truck and then sent to its final destination. Lastly, you know, just to talk a little bit about the off takes, you know, so there's a pretty high demand for the natural gas coming out of this. So the, the renewable, the Minnesota Natural Gas Innovation Act has been passed, so this is requiring our utilities to find and source or create renewable natural gas. And so both CenterPoint Energy and Excel have both listed this project and others like it in their submission to the Public Utility Commission as sources of the renewable natural gas that they've been tasked with by legislature to meet the climate change goals by, for the state. And we'll have a, a direct pipeline connection, so we're not trucking any natural gas. So we will connect directly to the pipeline and then it'll go into the system from there. And as I said before, the biochar process is used for soil remediation, different soil amendments, a lot of, you know, if you look at a lot of these garden blends, you might buy Ace Hardware, a lot of those would have biochar in them as well. And again, just to highlight, you know, we'll be producing 200,000 mm BTU of RNG a year, 7,500 tons a year of biochar. Kind of looking at, you know, we had to do some, some research for CenterPoint, some of the other utilities on what is the impact when we're looking at greenhouse gases to meet some of the climate goals the state has. So, you know, this project is taking 30,000 tons of CO2, which is equal to 6,100 passenger car vehicles a year, just for a point of reference. And also helping meet the Minnesota climate change and recycling goals. So we're obviously taking, the majority of this waste right now is going to landfill. So this is taking this product, pulling out, putting it at a higher, better use, and achieving some of our climate goals at the same time, as well as with the carbon sequestration with the, with the biochar, that, that's helps move the needle with trying, the state trying to be carbon neutral by 2050. And then just finally, you know, just to talk a couple site specifics, that's, I think it's good to give everybody an overview of, of kind of what, what exactly we're, we're doing. You know, Greg touched on it, for, for traffic, we're estimating that it's going to be about 25 to 30 inbound loads a day of incoming material, and then 10 to 30 loads a day of just like passenger traffic tours, employees. So a very, you know, reference to some of the other, you know, our own operations and some of the other surrounding operations in the industrial property, it's pretty minimal. That's how we view it from a vehicle stand, traffic standpoint. Dust, we're really not anticipating there really be any dust generated on the property. The entire site is either paved or landscaped. And if you recall, all the material is dumped directly in the building, there's not, not really going to be any products stored outside or anything like that. So we're not anticipating dust. Noise, as, as Greg touched on, there's some permit conditions regarding noise and some of the environmental review. And if you recall, most of the, the, the equipment is inside a building. So that's one of the bigger noise mitigators than anything that is outside. It's all engineered to the standard to meet whatever the Minnesota and, you know, most of it's, some of the technology is coming from Europe, so it's meeting the European and Minnesota standards. So we don't anticipate noise being an issue. You know, one of the larger things people talk about with this facility is odor. It's organic material, we're, we're degrading organic material, the, the biogas that's produced, you know, when, when you have a compost site, when you have a backyard leaf pile, you know, there's always an odor when you have organic material. And we, we feel we have a really good odor mitigation plan, and there's a number of things with, with the project that we have. You know, first and foremost is everything's inside and everything's controlled. You know, when you're, when, when you're doing things with organics outside, you have wind, rain, weather, snows, it wetters, it dries, and that all can affect what's happening with organics. When we're inside, everything is climate controlled, and any odor that is created, we're holding inside the building. The, the second mitigation measure is all of the buildings that are handling, you know, organics or the digestate, they're all under negative pressure. So we're, we're exchanging the air about four times an hour in the building, which means we're pulling in four times, you know, the building volume every hour, we're pulling in four times that of fresh air. So, and we've been to these facilities and seen this technology, so if you can, you know, if you were standing there when the door opens for a truck to dump, you'll actually feel a breeze at your back. It's pulling air in, and that's just to keep any of the odors inside. Well, if we're pulling air in, the air's got to go somewhere. And so the, all of the air that's discharged from the facility, from this positive air pressure, goes through, it's called coldox technology. So this is going through a filtration mechanism, and it's using ozone, UV, and carbon filtration. So this is taking any of the VOCs, anything that would be odor causing them, and running them through a filter media before they're being discharged. So this is the exact technology that we went to Sweden to see. You know, we went in December, we're like, we want to see it, we want to see it work, and we want it to be cold. And, because that's, you know, stuff breaks when it's cold, and so we just wanted to make sure, you know, so I could stand here today and say, this is good technology, it works, we've been there, it's very effective. You know, we'll have, and, and there's all a very significant monitoring system, you know, we have to staff the facility 24/7, so we'll always have people on site. There's pretty significant telemetrics and reporting, so we'll, we'll know if something needs maintenance, we'll know ahead of time, we'll have spare parts on the shelf, that's all part of a pretty robust plan. So it's not only having the rec technology, but then it's maintaining it along the way. And we have a good plan for that. And the other discharge is, is some of the discharge that's going through the AQCS system that we've already talked about. So there isn't any air in these buildings that isn't treated before it's released into the atmosphere. And so just, you know, between doing it inside and then treating the air, we're confident we're not going to have odor issues with the facility. And that's, you know, was, was kind of from day one, that was our number one thing that we knew we needed to mitigate and, and take care of. We're there, we're operating our business, you know, we know we got to keep the neighbors happy and, and, you know, keep, you know, our facility on our site and keep it that way. And we feel we've got a really good, robust plan. And then lastly, on the visual piece, I think we've talked about that, you know, the sites, kind of with the mining and the reclamation, the site's kind of already going to be depressed. And I think we've got a pretty good plan for some of the landscaping, you know, just to screen it, you know, as that landscape develops. And then between the elevation, I think it's, it's going to be pretty minimal as far as the visual impact. So I, I think we have a pretty good program for that as well. So like I said, I'm joined here with Bill Keegan. Bill has, has worked on this project for the last six, seven years, been very involved in the air permitting and the EAW to date. And then Tom Grotz with Canadavia, the equipment supplier, project partners here. So I guess I'll open it up for questions if, for myself or any of the gentlemen with me.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Robbins.
Yeah, let's go back for a minute.
Yep.
The stuff that you get, the supply.
Yep.
Just correct me if I'm wrong, it's food waste.
Yep.
It's plants, it's anything that's organic. It's not, it's not waste. It's not, not, I said that wrong, it's not, it's food, scraps, and, and plant waste. Is that what you use for your supply?
Yes.
Yes. You talked about employees, how many employees will you have onsite?
We're anticipating, it's highly automated, we're anticipating an employee count of about 12 employees.
12 employees for this whole thing?
Yep.
And then finally, if I could, just for a minute, if you go back a minute, on any regular day, how many trucks are going in and out again?
So receiving hours will be Monday through Saturday, kind of normal business hours, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And 20 to 30 inbound loads of feedstock of, of the, the food. And then we're estimating 10 to 30 trips a day of tours, employees, you know, just, you know.
When you say trucks, are you talking about semis?
Yeah, yep. Almost every low, we're, we're, we're more than likely, besides very local route trucks, almost all the feedstock coming in will be consolidated or processed somewhere else. So it'll be coming in in full 20 ton truckloads, not, not, you know, a garbage truck that went down the street necessarily, besides very localized traffic.
And then finally, this is all coming from all of the waste facilities around the metropolitan area?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
So you mentioned that inside the building, the air will be filtered.
Yep.
So the employees will be protected?
Yes, yes, yeah. The main, the main concern is odor. The, the actual air quality as far as from a human and health standpoint is really not, not of significant risk. But as part of any project like this, once we get up an operational, we bring in air monitors, test for employee health and safety, but we're not anticipating that being a, a health and safety current concern, it's generally, you know, for odor mitigation.
So that, that is true for all the buildings and all the employees, very, very well that was implied.
Yes, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair. I just have a question on the civil plant, and what the difference between the digester pond versus infiltration pond? Is that where you recycle a lot of the water in the digestion pond?
No, that's just stormwater. So we called it the digester, I think it was a carryover, you know, there's that pond to the north that's for, we had to calculate in the landfill stormwater.
Oh.
So at one time, one was labeled, you know, the landfill stormwater pond and the digester pond. It's just a stormwater pond.
It is a whole pond, and it goes into the infiltration.
Then it goes to infiltration, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pika. Mark, could you touch on that pipeline infrastructure?
Yep.
I just, I know there's a lot of red rock around there, where's it going to come or go, or how do you see it coming in there?
Yeah, there, there, you know, CenterPoint is still, you know, working on the final engineering plans for that. But all indicators from them, and, you know, we don't know where their easements are and where they're, you know, they have to, they kind of have to go through their own channels to connect to the site. But all indicators are they're going to come along Red Rock Drive, and then they're going to hook into the connection point on the northwest side of the site. I, I haven't seen a final plan of how they're going to get across 169. I know they've got their pipeline on the east side of 169 that, you know, they ran a few years ago.
Inch and a half or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think this might be a little larger pipeline, this one, do we know the size of the pipeline? Yeah, they're doing that engineering, but it might be a three or four inch pipeline, I wouldn't be surprised if it's.
And then be on the east side of the, what you're seeing.
Well, it's on the east side now, but I mean, they got to get to the west side to connect to us at some point. I think they're, they've, they're planning, I believe it's about six miles of new, newer or, you know, upsized pipe they would have to bring in to connect to the site.
One other question, Mark. Was there a test well or something on that property, or is that then decommissioned?
Yeah, right in the middle of the site, there was a monitoring well for the Merriam Junction Sands frac sand mining project. And so it's still there, it'll be sealed here pretty shortly as Brian Rock is moving across the property, that'll be sealed, but it, it's not being used anymore.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, as far as mining, you're going to be mining the, the Shaksby limestone down to the Jordan, roughly?
Yes, yeah.
Roughly, and, and you re-engineer the material back up to grade?
Yes, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman. Mark, the biochar waste product, how many truckloads of that? Give me an idea how much of that is going out of the plant?
So that's 7,500 tons, and it'll be leaving in about the same kind of quantities that it's coming in. So it's about 10%. So we got 7,500 tons coming in, which is 25 to 30 trucks, so, you know, be 10% of that, so two and a half of those 25 to 30, 10% of them are basically would be biochar product leaving.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner President.
One more question, ma'am. Going back to my question at the, the meeting, the floor, why only 15 feet of that?
For the stack height? Yeah, for the, for the stack height, yeah, I, I, the, the air, you know, for the air permit, we had to take, you know, all the inputs of the facility and basically model the emissions of the entire facility. That's the 400 some odd pages of, of air permit you have. That was a prescribed elevation from the MPCA. So they, they kind of set that stack height, and then all the modeling is based off of that. So that wasn't necessarily ours to determine, it was a permit condition.
Is that the minimum, 15 feet, is that the minimum one, you're meeting the minimum height requirement, or?
It's the.
Go higher.
It's the modeled stack height. So that's what, you know, you kind of have to pick the height as your model, you, you have to for sure get it above the buildings, because they want to get the, they want to model it, so it's kind of, the, the, the air isn't being, you know, swirling around buildings, so you have to get it high enough. And this is the height above the building that, that they required as part of the modeling.
So my, the point I was trying to make was if you go higher, then you are leaving out, I, I, I mean, you, you are not affecting the environment.
Sure.
Lower. So more higher. Lower, so higher is preferred, that's what, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, the, the thought of like, the higher the emissions, the better, um, and, and that is correct, if we were required to do that, we would have to restart the air permitting process, which was pretty onerous already, so we'd prefer not, prefer not to do that. I think just reference to the air permit, um, Bill and I were just kind of looking back to some of the work that we did, you know, just earlier, reminding ourselves, so the emissions out of the stack are equivalent to 1,220 passenger vehicles a day. So for reference, 169 has over 40,000 cars a day, so even though we have this air quality system, and even though there's a stack, the emissions are very, very minimal, and just, we don't, wouldn't really think they're a concern at the stack height that it's at now.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman.
Mr. Watson.
Mark, real quick, we're going to have a. You're going to have some flare-off, uh, with gas, and that, a flame issue associated with that, I know there's going to be questions and concerns when folks drive down the road and see some flame coming out of the stack, but maybe you can just address that real quick.
Yep, yeah, so there is a flare, that's part of the project, so the flare is used, um, sometimes during startup and shutdown, and, you know, there basically has to be a, a, a point where you have some relief in, in certain times of the gas production, our air permit regulates how often we can run that flare, and that flare isn't closed, so there's, there's a, a ground-level stack with a flare, not, not the air emission stack we're talking about, there's another one on the site, um, that if I recall, 20, 30 feet tall, so not significant, but the flame is inside the stack, so you won't ever see an open flame as part of the project.
Okay.
Any other questions? The only question I had was, you went to Sweden to see, because of the temperature differences.
Yep.
Because a lot of the processes are temperature-sensitive, correct?
Yep.
And, and you were satisfied that they had mitigated those.
Yes.
In the processes, in being able to, because we do have a very wide range of temperatures that you're operating.
Exactly, yeah.
Kind of manage these processes as they're going.
Yep, exactly, yeah, yeah, that, I mean, that's why we went there and we picked that location, because, you know, we loved the trip to sunny California to look at, you know, a couple of the facilities there, um, but we, we wanted to go see the one, particularly with the odor mitigation, because part of that is on the exterior of the building, and so particularly, we wanted to go where that particular technology was being used in a very similar climate, so that's why we ended up there.
And how long is that plant in operation?
2019, was that, Yoncoping?
Sweden is about eight, six or eight years.
Yeah, six to eight years in operation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please stay available, we may have further questions.
Mr. Chair, no additional comments from staff, as mentioned, both county staff and the township did recommend, or staff has recommended approval, and the township, uh, did also recommend approval, so.
Thank you.
I think I see Bob Peiper from the township, if you have any questions of them, or obviously Mark and his team.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Um, thank you very much, uh, while this is a public hearing at this time, if you'd like to make comment on this application before us, uh, please come up to the podium, there is a sign-up sheet at the podium there, um, before you make your comments and start with your name, if you'd like to make a comment. Not seen anybody rush up to the podium here, let's say one more time, if anyone would like to make comments on this, come up to the podium. Hey, thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Pika. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain, uh, a motion or discussion on the matter, of course.
Chairman, I, well, on a program, and obviously needs requirements of our endeavors for carbon control, uh, based upon the criteria for approval, I recommend approval, the preliminary plat, the Red Rock Industrial Park, and the conditional use permit for Demcon HZI Bioenergy LLC to construct and operate an aerobic digester, noting that this recommendation is subject to the con, conditions listed in the staff report must be satisfactorily addressed prior to county board consideration, also noting that the township has approved as well.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins.
Mr. Chair, can I speak to the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, just a couple of words, I, uh, this has been an extensive, long, long project, uh, it's been before us, before I know, before the community, before, I'm struck by all of the detail in it, and also by all of the things that the developer considered in terms of odor, in terms of where the waste would go, in terms of, of, of how you transport, how you get product in and product out, and so, I mean, it's, it's, it can be overwhelming when you first hear about it, but, um, it does, uh, I think breathe some confidence in, in the whole process because of how well thought out, and I think initially, people said, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't, you know, and I think the developer had to, to work hard and long to answer all of those legitimate, I might add, concerns by the surrounding community, but, um, it certainly is, uh, it gives me some hope, that renewable energy and the kinds of things we can do in the future will be, um, fruitful, so thank you.
Okay, any further come before I call for vote? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on the table here, uh, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes, thank you very much for your presentation, information this evening. Uh, our next item, eh, number five, is a tabled item, and this is, uh, tabled, uh, from, uh, September, uh, 2024, just 051, request to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide 10 parcel, 10 acres from transition area, uh, to rural business reserve at the intersection of State Highway 13 and County Road 10 in the unincorporated hamlet of Lydia in Spring Lake Township. Spring Lake Township is the applicant, section's 29, and, and I believe, uh, our, uh, planning manager Brad Davis will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, you are correct, this was a tabled item, and, um, a public hearing was held on this back on September 9th, and after, uh, holding that public hearing and closing it, the Planning Commission took no action on it and tabled the item to allow time for the Spring Lake Town Board as the applicant to, um, gather and provide more information, and so tonight, we are back providing that information, I'll be presenting some updated information, and then, um, the township will also be at the podium here and providing some information to you. Uh, as you know, the, um, location of the requested comprehensive plan amendment is in the hamlet of Lydia, that's at the crossroads of State Highway 13 and County Road 10, the parcels that are being requested are outlined in red on this map. Spring Lake Town Board is requesting to re-guide those 10 properties that are outlined in the red boundary from, uh, transition area to rural business reserve. These properties are privately owned, Doug and Kelly Schiefer own several of the parcels on the east side of, of Highway 13, and then Langford Way LLC is the listed property owner for the properties on the west side of Langford that you see on the map here. So one of the maps that we've used throughout this process is, is this showing what the existing land use is for these parcels today, and then what the proposed change would look like on a map. And again, the, the parcels in gray on this map are the ones that are being proposed to go from transition reserve, which is most of Lydia, you can see in the map, most of Lydia and the surrounding areas in that transition reserve, with the exception of an old school site that is shown as a red parcel that's, um, guided and zone commercial today. And the request then, as I've mentioned, is re-guiding 10 of those properties to rural business reserve. You know, another important feature on this map is that brown line, that's the, um, boundary of the hamlet mixed-use overlay, and, um, several of these parcels are included in this overlay district, uh, four properties in fact, um, are included in that overlays, uh, these parcels in this area and these parcels here. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, because I know there were some questions about how this relates to the hamlet, uh, mixed-use, um, land use as well, so we'll talk about that. So, uh, the moving of these parcels to rural business reserve would allow the property owners to, uh, plat those properties into different lots, and then create the, the types of uses that are allowed in the rural business reserve category. These are the, the common uses that are allowed in that, that future zoning, manufactured processing, a contracted yard, landscaping, trucking, repair and restoration, general office space, warehousing. A lot of these are uses that, uh, look for lots to put up a, an office building, uh, a work, workshop area, outdoor storage, those type of businesses are the ones that we are hearing a lot of, uh, demand to find locations around the county, we talked about that back in September, the, uh, Community Development Agency did, did kind of a market study of, or at least, uh, market needs of, based on what they're hearing, kind of the need for that type of land use. Um, that hamlet mixed-use overlay, so those four properties that are in that category today, that's not going to change, this comp plan amendment does not change the boundaries of the hamlet mixed-use, so those four properties could, could, uh, develop these uses today, and they could develop them if this comp plan amendment changes. The underlying zoning will change, but that overlay stays the same, so I think that's an important point to make. So those properties today, uh, these are the, uh, overlay uses that are allowed as conditional uses, a gas station, convenience store, office, a professional building, brew pub, daycare center, restaurants, taverns, retail shops, vet clinics, open outdoor sales and display, those are uses that are allowed today in that hamlet mixed-use, um, and they'll be allowed at, um, on those properties whether they change or not under this comp plan amendment. So this project, the township had, came to the county with this kind of idea of, of re-guiding this area really about a year ago, and last spring, we held, uh, kind of a pre-application meeting, just to start identifying what are some considerations if this area was to develop, and, um, early on, talked about, uh, some of the wetlands that are in this area, the need to protect those wetlands through any type of development process, recognized, recognizing that there is floodplain areas in this area, and really needing to understand, um, where those floodplain boundaries exist, um, what are the functions of those floodways, are they on the fringe, are they the floodway itself, um, stormwater management would be an important consideration, uh, putting on, uh, onsite septic and well, and then local road improvements, um, we've taken the position that we, we as a county were not going to support re-guiding areas for this type of development until we knew there was a, a front or a baggage road to serve that, to serve those lots, and not, of course, take access directly off of State Highway 13 or directly off of 10 for multiple lots. So those are the critical site development considerations, um, a lot of these, I think, came up at the public hearing, questions, concerns, comments about them, I think since that hearing, the township and, um, the property owners has spent time, I think, uh, doing more analysis and gathering more information on these, and they'll be presented here tonight and, and, uh, give you more information before you make a decision. So with all comp plan amendments, uh, here in the Twin Cities, we have to follow the Met Council's review process that kicked off last summer, we, um, sent this request out for that formal 60-day agency review, and it was sent to those different jurisdictions or agencies listed on the screen. Um, then we held the public hearing in September, um, looking for a recommendation here tonight, that then goes to the county board, and then they take preliminary action, because that, that isn't the final step, if the board then, um, recommends approval, it then goes to the Metropolitan Council, they review it and determine if this comp plan amendment is consistent with all of the regional system plans, and if they believe it is, they, it then comes back to the county board for final adoption. So that process, from this point tonight, could take another three, four months before you get to any, uh, final adoption period. So, uh, of the jurisdictions that were notified, we did not get any comments from the Department of Transportation, the DNR, or the Jordan School Districts, but we did hear from the city of Prior Lake. The city of Prior Lake did offer support for the township's request. Um, one thing that has happened throughout this process is the city of Prior Lake and Spring Lake Township came together to update the orderly annex, annexation agreement between those two entities, and that's shown on the map here in the red, red parcels, this is just north of Lydia, um, this is the intersection of State Highway 13 and 17 and 282. So this area had been under an orderly annexation agreement for several decades, um, but it was updated, and what's unique now is the city of Prior Lake has, has taken over planning and zoning authority for this orderly annexation area, so that's a changing condition that we didn't have back in, uh, 2019, when the 2040 plan was adopted. And this area is notable that it, it includes Spring Lake Township's only, uh, rural industrial park today, uh, located near the County Highway Shop on Dairy Lane, and, um, there's six, seven, eight lots in Dairy Lane that have, um, rural industrial uses, that rural industrial park now is part of this orderly annexation area, presumably will be annexed into the city of Shokopee at some point in the future, there's no timelines tied to this agreement anymore, but the assumption is that we'll get annexed eventually, and, um, therefore, Spring Lake Township would not have a rural industrial park, so that's one of the changes that I think, uh, both prompted this request and prompted our consideration to consider this land use amendment. The watershed district, this is the Prior Lake, Spring Lake watershed district, they, um, submitted comments, and they, of course, were focused on the, some of the natural features, the, the floodplains and wetlands, and again, like, the county, um, wanted much more clarification on those boundaries, um, they would be interested in some of this area for an, uh, upland storage site, and so they wanted to make that known, and they also noted, um, the county ditch, and just kind of considering that as an important, uh, water infrastructure, as you consider development in this area. So back in September, I talked about, um, how this request lines up with, with the other, um, requests, this is the fifth comprehensive plan amendment the county has, uh, I guess, considered since the 2040 plan was adopted back in 2019. All of them have really sought to move land from, in a reserve, either an urban expansion or urban commercial, or a transition to a commercial industrial, so all five moved from kind of those holding areas to something that could be developed as either commercial or industrial or rural business. All of them have been along, uh, major highways, so we had, uh, one early on up in Louisville Township on a newly, uh, built frontage road that moved property from urban expansion to commercial. We had a couple of, um, comp plan amendments in this part of Sand Creek Township with, um, some of the, uh, improvements to, and interchange is getting on and off 169, value drive has become an important, uh, baggage road to 169 in that area, saw a couple of comp plan amendments moving from, um, more of that urban expansion to a commercial industrial. And then Spring Lake Township itself, uh, with a private property owner, um, we looked at a comp plan amendment at 282 and 13, um, which did not make, uh, which was denied at the end, given the fact that it was within the city of Prior Lake's long-range growth area. So that's a little bit of history, um, of all of our comp plan amendments, most of them are like this, moving land from, um, one use to a commercial or industrial type use. The, uh, the staff report includes the review criteria, so, um, it's not uncommon to update comprehensive plans, it's typically, uh, development-driven, the last two have been township-driven, so the ones in Sand Creek were, the applicant was Sand Creek Town Board, and the one before you tonight is initiated by Spring Lake, um, so it isn't unusual. So it isn't unusual to amend the comp plan. And when we do, we've had this criteria that we want to make sure we can address when we think about these decisions. It's important that it promotes land use compatibility and that it meets the goals and policies of the comp plans. So in the staff report, I identify a couple of goals and policies that I think are, can be tied to this request. And again, based on those A, B, and C's, I don't think we have an air of inconsistency, but I think we do have a change of condition as I noted earlier. So back in September, again, we held a public hearing, notices that were mailed out. You can see the number of property owners there. We had, I think, looking back in the minutes, maybe over a dozen that came to this podium and provided comments. We had a lot more in the room than those dozen, but that was the count I came up with that provided testimony. I think there was testimony that opposed this request, raised a lot of questions, comments, Those questions, concerns dealt with the wetlands, wildlife, stormwater runoff, localized flooding, traffic, outdoor lighting, noise, just the overall intensity this type of development would bring to to the hamlet. So since that hearing, the town board has has included this as a standing item on their agenda. And it's my understanding that there has been discussion each month at their town board meeting. I was not present to witness it, but I'm told that there was a lot of sharing of information and providing information and they've compiled a lot of that information into some of the material that was submitted in your packet and that they'll cover here tonight. They did a lot of site analysis that I know they want to share with you and kind of some of the specific specifics around particularly the properties in red here, the Schiefer, property owned by the Schiefer family. They spent time determining where that frontage road best fits to serve those lots and important to the county, showing how it can be extended and serve future development in this area. That was a key issue that we brought up at the last meeting. And so they'll provide and show you some maps of those concepts and how that could work. So tonight, you have different options. The staff is recommending approval of this comp plan amendment. You can approve that request as recommended. You may add your own specific conditions with that request as it goes to the county board. You can continue to table this or deny the request. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the township and I can then come back with any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's nice to see you all again. My name is Jennifer Haskamp. I'm the owner of Swanson Haskamp Consulting. I've recently been retained by the township to help them with some of their planning-related issues, concerns, et cetera. This is it. In your packets this evening was actually a copy of a presentation that we gave to members of the public during their meeting in December. I'm not going to actually go through all of it because it is quite redundant and repeats a lot of what Brad just introduced and discussed. But there are a couple of pieces that I think are important to set the stage before Tim comes up and talks a little bit about the actual site development concept that's been prepared. So from from a community perspective, I think it's really important to be reminded of what the objectives are in terms of the township. So one of the key pieces here Brad touched on is that there is a change in condition from when you originally did your 2040 comprehensive plan. And that change of condition is the fact that the township did reach an orderly annexation agreement update with the city. And when that happened and as it happens, it has the effect of essentially removing the only rural industrial area, thus affecting obviously tax base as we move forward. So when that agreement was established, part of the township's perspective was how do we replace that? How do we continue to diversify our tax base? How do we get to a position that we have a sustainable community long-term? One of those pieces is where is that appropriate land located? And so this area, these parcels were what was identified as part of that. So that's a key part of the objective from the township's perspective in why they are requesting this amendment this evening. It's also important to keep in mind that while your comp plan is obviously adopted every 10 years, that things do happen within that decennial update period. I have several clients, which I've had to remind that we had a pandemic that happened after most of our comprehensive plans were adopted. And so a lot of things actually became not relevant in terms of our comp plans because we simply did not know that that was going to happen. And so we've had to adjust and we do have to amend your comp plan occasionally. And that is why your ordinance and your comp plan does provide options or ways in which you can amend it. So from that perspective, the township feels that we have a change, we have an impetus, something that has occurred, that they are seeking this change this evening. One of the other pieces of clarification between the presentation that was given prior a couple of months ago and tonight is just the clarification that the township is seeking these particular parcels, this approximately 96 acres to be incorporated into an amendment. There is a larger study area that is under discussion as well. That larger study area will continue to be looked at by the township in terms of what the appropriate land use mix is. The idea is that that would be adjusted and discussed during the 2050 comprehensive plan process. So it's not on the table tonight. The idea though is that clearly this comprehensive plan amendment period or area, the 96 acres, would talk to and be coordinated with the surrounding area. That surrounding area would not be before you before that 2050 planning period, which unbelievably enough is going to start, we're going to start planning for that within the next couple of years. So again, we know what parcels we're talking about this evening. I'm not going to belabor it. Tim does have a concept plan established of how this site could lay out. Do you know there were several questions that came up during the last review of this in terms of how does this layout, how, what does this look like long-term? How do we actually get frontage roads, backage roads, those types of things incorporated into the plan? Also sort of this difference between the mixed-use overlay of the hamlet and then also the rural business reserve. The idea being that this area would develop under that RBR standard, obviously, and not utilize or exercise the hamlet overlay. That's important because there's actually some fairly significant requirements, performance standards that exist within RBR that do not exist under the overlay. That would afford the opportunity to be able to do things like screening, offering, larger setbacks, those types of things with the adjacent and the surrounding property owners, understanding that we have a fair number of them in the audience this evening. So we talked just a little bit with the public to make sure that they understood that this is really just the first step of the process. We're really saying, is this the appropriate area for this land use designation? Would we like to see this type of development here? From a township perspective, there are many steps that remain after tonight if you were to recommend approval. Obviously Brad talked a little bit about even just what it takes to get the comp plan amendment over the finish line. Once or if that occurs, then there's the whole playoff process. That includes all of those very site-specific details, like making sure there's appropriate screening, stormwater is managed. All of those pieces fall into play during that next phase of the process. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Tim, who's going to talk a little bit more about the actual concept that's been developed in response, I think, partly to what was heard over the last couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Tim Arvidson. I'm with Stonework Engineering. We're currently representing the landowner and working with the township for the development of this site. I wasn't able to attend the the previous meeting, but I did receive a copy of the comments and concerns. And so we actually spent quite a bit of time trying to dig into the issues, whether it was traffic or wetlands or whatever, and trying to answer as many of those questions as we possibly could and determine the development potential for this site. One of the first things we did, and you may have seen this or a version of this at the at the last meeting, is develop a concept layout. At the time that was done, we didn't have a tremendous amount of information. I think we had some preliminary wetland data. We didn't have any septic sites. We were aware of the floodplain concerns and that sort of thing. And that resulted in this sketch identifying potentially a roadway or proposed roadway into the site. In this scenario, we're also looking at proposing or providing connectivity to the southerly piece of it and it resulted in a layout that created approximately 16 lots. Since that time, we did actually go more in-depth with the septic designs. We had a septic designer go out and test the the sites. We also completed the wetland delineation and determined where wetland sites and so forth were out there. Those are located, for example, I don't know if you can see the cursor, but the green areas on here are approved wetland boundaries. It's gone through the TEP process and we do believe those are accurate and correct wetland boundaries on the property. Also, the septic sites that are shown on here as well have gone through an approval process through the county. We haven't received an official notification on it, but we're very confident that those septic sites do in fact work. There were some minor modifications made to the lot layout as, excuse me, as a result of the potential septic sites. Lot one, for example, here is showing just one potential site or primary and alternate site in that northwest corner. Those are the only sites that were identified as being feasible. So that lot that was previously shown as two is now just shown as a single lot. I do want to stress though, this is just still a conceptual layout. Another big concern that we heard about this was the floodplains. And so we took a step backwards and we kind of looked at the history of what was going on out there. There was a floodplain change that occurred in about 2021. Prior to 2021, there really wasn't anything out there that was concerned. There were some areas that were in that 500-year floodplain. But somehow, we actually didn't get to the bottom of it. In about 2021, FEMA said it was a request by the county. The county had indicated it was a request by FEMA. This area was modified and it became part of the flood zone. And what that meant was basically the majority of the property appeared to be encumbered by a floodplain. We took a look at it and said, well, we're a little concerned about it because the floodplain elevations were actually about four feet higher than Trunk Highway 13 is out there. So that would put, you know, the majority of the city, the highway itself and a lot of other areas within the floodplain. There's a kind of a natural depression in the area, which is kind of the intent of identifying those as potential floodplains. What we had to do from there is actually a letter of map amendment. So we went through a fairly extensive process, working with FEMA to determine or confine, I'm going to say, the actual floodplains in the area. And so we're looking specifically at the 100-year floodplain or 1% potential floodplain area out there. The results of the letter of map amendment was confining what was shown on the previous screen, which is basically the light grayed out area, into a much more confined area, which would include the ditch itself and a couple of other, you know, depressions, I'm going to call it on the on the site. Without getting too engineering in it, there was actually two different floodplain elevations that were established for the site. The parcel, basically the properties that include the ditch in the middle of the property as well as everything to the north, was determined that the base flood elevation was 938.6. On the southerly piece of the property, the base flood elevation was a 943.9. The majority of the reason for the difference in those two areas on these properties is that there was a bottleneck in the ditch itself that caused a potential flooding issue up into, excuse me, the bottleneck is down below further, oops. The bottleneck is down here further and that caused the potential for the parcel to the south to flood, which would flood into this property as well. And so when we looked at it and worked through it with FEMA and did all the modeling and analysis, it was determined that we would in fact split it between two different flood elevations, 938.6 to the north and 943.9 to the south. The following slide is after we went through this process, obviously we're working hand-in-hand with FEMA, providing modeling data and rainfall analysis and things like that, they did actually accept those two elevations that I'd identified. This is a copy of their acceptance on those. I actually included these in the slide because they're actually referring to parcels, or it says lot ABC and then the other one is lot C through G. In the prior map that the county was showing, you could see that there's a number of parcels that exist out there. Those are just labeled A, B, C, D, E, F, G. So basically starting from the top and going down, C is the overlap right where the ditch goes through the middle. But in case there's any concern over why those are numbered or named the way they are, it's just because of the way FEMA had it set up. Then after the floodplain area was determined, we actually had to take a look, a deeper dive into it and determine what was a floodway versus flood fringe. And so a floodway is essentially the channel that the water is flowing in, whether it's a river or a creek or in our case, a ditch. It's the area of the ditch that's actually needed to contain that 100-year flood, which is essentially the 938.9 elevation that we talked about before. So that ditch floods approximately to that elevation. However, south of there, it has a potential to flood over the top of that ditch flow elevation, which would create the flood fringe or the areas that are adjacent to it. And the reason that's important is there's different impacts that are allowed depending on whether you're part of a floodway or a flood fringe from the county's ordinance. So we had to, we had to take a look at that. The results of that analysis are shown in this next slide. Again, it's a little bit confusing, but generally speaking, everything to the north is a 938.6 and to the south is a 943.9. There is a little bit of a fringe area right here and the reason that this is fringe is just what I described. The flood of this ditch itself floods to a 938.6. This is adjacent to it. But because it was located on the southerly parcel, that area was defined as being at a 943.9 to still be in the floodplain. We actually think that we could even confine that further by updating the LOMA again if that was an issue. But as we get into these other slides, I'm not sure it's going to be that important. Permitted uses, this is actually right from the county's ordinance in terms of floodway versus flood fringe. Without reading it to you, again, generally speaking with a floodway, you can do things like parking lots and that sort of thing. You can't put structures in it. You can do some work, but generally it's going to take mitigation where if you take a shovel full of dirt out, you got to put a, or put a shovel for dirt foot, excuse me, a shovel full of dirt in, you're going to have to take a shovel full of dirt out, that sort of thing. And it just really controls the restrictions on it. The flood fringe area is a lot more forgiving. Generally speaking, the fringe area is buildable. You just have to have structures and whatever you do outside of the floodplain elevation when you do it. So it's a little less constrictive, which is why that floodway flood fringe is important. In terms of the floodway impact, this is that original concept sketch that we had shown on the first slide. So you can see the flood fringe area on the east side down here. The floodway itself is just the channel that goes through here and then this finger to the south. Again, you have to dig into the definition of floodway versus flood fringe to determine why is, for example, this finger to the south a floodway versus everything else being flood fringe? The answer is the area along the ditch floods that 938, so anything adjacent to the ditch is basically a fringe because it's not in that floodway, whereas the area to the south floods to a higher elevation and is therefore connected to the ditch down in this area. So that bottleneck I was talking about, you can kind of see here in the contours, so. So we, we updated the concept layout just to see what would actually work and make sure that we still had a viable site development. What we did is adjusted the alignment of the roadway a little bit. That finger to the south that we talked about before, not only is it in the floodway, but it's also part of a wetland. And to be honest, that floodway area and the wetland area continues to extend to the south, where we could potentially extend a roadway through that wetland and into the southerly parcel. I don't know that that would be that feasible because you're essentially going to extend the roadway into another wetland, which isn't going to be very, you know, ideal for anybody. So instead, we turned the roadway to provide connectivity to the east and potentially even down to the southeast. We would, under this scenario, look at constructing a future roadway with a temporary turnaround near that wetland or floodway area and then provide likely just a right-of-way extension either to the straight east or to the southeast as shown. So I, the majority of the other things we talked about, whether it was the hamlet area and that sort of thing, is kind of overlap from what the county had covered. But I can certainly stand for any questions you guys might have on any of these topics or anything else that you heard. you heard about that I didn't address, so.
Mr. Chairman? I'm confused about something.
Sure.
You were working with the people that want to develop this property, correct?
Correct.
But you're referring to work you did with FEMA in 2021?
Correct.
How does that tie in to what's going on right now? This, I thought this just got started a little bit ago.
So, they were looking at potentially developing this site that far back, and so we were just looking at, you know, concept layouts and what would take, you know, to develop the site. The reason it didn't come to you guys till now is because we were working with FEMA to confine that floodplain area. So prior to that, it was all in that flood zone and would be difficult to do anything with.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, well, I think that is all the information we plan to present, so we can continue to stand for questions, but we will turn it over to you for your deliberation.
Well, I was somewhat thinking that we might take a little more comment at this time. I know some people have come here who have not spoken before and would like to comment on this, and I think that probably would entertain that at this time. Just want to come up and you can just sign in and then start with your name, your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Commissioner Plan. My name is Jeff Knower, and I'm the new supervisor for Spring Lake Township. The amendment plan was submitted and supported by the Spring Lake Township Board, which included the former supervisor Doug Barron, who is here today, and Lisa Quinn, who is not able to be here tonight. As a new board member, you know, I was able to attend a number of the meetings, listen to the presentations and the resident concerns, so I do approve this amendment plan. Finally, I'd like to share a letter that was written by Glenn Kelly, who couldn't be here, who also supports this amendment. I'm sorry, unable to attend the planning commission meeting tonight. I appreciate your listening to my brief statements in support of the comp plan amendment. I was a Spring Lake Township supervisor for 10 years, beginning in 2007. Part of my duties include serving as the liaison with the scale of the Scott County Association for Leadership and Excellence. During my tenure, the 50-30 initiative was high priority with the goal to achieve 50% of the county labor force living and working in the county by 2030. This rural industrial initiative is an example of how the Spring Lake Township can help achieve and sustain this goal for long-term by providing the space for local businesses to thrive. Scott County recognizes the importance of bringing in retail and commercial industrial business to the county and commissioned a May Maxfield Research and Consultant to study the demand for availability of retail and commercial land. And in the most recent study, the summary of the demand analysis noted a gap in the market for available space together to targeting smaller 10,000 to 20,000 square foot industrial users and need for properties that allowed outside storage. Is also a demand from smaller industrial users that target local households and household growth. These are mechanics, contractors, plumbers, electricians. But there are very few space options in the market. We have the ability to help fill this gap for businesses that often don't fit well into the city's plan. Finally, during my time as supervisor, I saw a full buildout of the Kruger Industrial Park. This is a well-maintained, well-run, high-tax value area that provides jobs and services to Scott County. The township-only industrial park, with the signing of the annexation agreement, that area will become part of Pryor Lake in the coming years. This proposed development will allow us to retain a diverse tax base and help soften the financial impact of losing areas in township to annexation. I recognize as leaders, these decisions are not popular. We're looking to find ways to achieve a greater good. In this instance, a diverse tax base and benefits residents of the Spring Lake Township, Scott County School Districts, and State of Minnesota, while protecting safety, the environment, and the rural feel in the area. Together, we can do that, and I encourage you to support this amendment. Glenn Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comments, who has not made comment before?
I've signed in on the other sheet, is that okay? Do you want me to sign in again?
Yeah, that's okay. You can just start with your comments.
Okay, so, name is Steve Neosi. I used to live in Pryor Lake, so the first thing I want to bring up is the tax base. Pryor Lake is a bedroom community, and they don't have any place to really have businesses. So therefore, the house that I lived in, my houses were quite extensive, about $6,000 a year. They promised me that they were going to double the taxes within the next couple of years, well, they've since tripled them. We moved out to Spring Lake Township now. The other thing is, I'm a business owner, and I am scattered all over Scott County right now. I've got about 3,000 square feet in Pryor Lake, 1,500 square feet in Shakopee, and about 300 square feet in Bell Plain. So, I'm an interior design company. I have furniture, low-impact. We drive in, move furniture in, take it out, put it in homes. So, for me, it'd be nice to have a place to call home, and I would need probably about 6,000 square feet and not scattered all over the whole county, so.
Okay.
Pretty much it. So I would love to see it approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Larson. I have a like, a project like this called Fieldstone in Lakeville. I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention on the importance of small business, places to go, and the tax base that my project, Fieldstone, brings to Scott County, which is, before I put Fieldstone together, it was an 83-acre farm site and brought about $5,000 in taxes to the county. Now it brings a million dollars to the county. Not saying that these buildings are going to be as expensive as the ones in mine, but the tax base is clearly higher than, like, the 44 houses across the street brings in about $350,000 to $400,000, and there's 44 houses in there. And we have to think about the future with businesses, and most of the people that work for me live in Scott County, they spend money in Scott County. And if we think about this about 20 years ago, when Gary Bond was basically removed from where he was working, and if it wasn't for this dairyland over where Doug Johnson is, Abbey Savota, these businesses would have no place because cities like Pryor Lake don't want them. They say they do, but they don't. And so, it's super important for, if you talk to Doug Quast, how important that this was for their tax base at Newmarket Township. He literally said if you could do 10 more of these, he would approve them because of the tax base, and then it's less impact on homeowners, you know, when they do a road, so that they don't have the burden of all of the road improvements. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Must be my turn. I knew it would be about now. Thank you.
I was going to say, whose phone is that?
Sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Well, good evening, and thank you for letting me be here and that you're here to listen to us, and here are concerns. I wrote some of this down because I don't want to go off. I'm sorry, but.
Could you start with your name?
I'd like to stay with you guys.
Can you start with your name?
My name is Ernie Mohn, I'm a landowner, and my wife is Denise Mohn. She's lived here 37 years in Spring Lake Township, I-23. We've raised eight kids, 23 grandkids, and three great-great-grandkids. I see this property as an advantage to Scott County for more family. I also attend and am trustee chair at Lydia Zion United Methodist Church, which no one has discussed, who may have to look at what's going on across the road from God's house. What's on the building committee, I have not yet heard. I think we're being a little bit sidelined here. You see all the blue, the blue areas on here? When you turn this into commercial, you may correct me if I'm wrong, you have to keep your water. Your water's not leaving that property, if I'm right, because that's what happened to Lydia Zion United Methodist Church. We did about a million and .4 addition to our church, and we changed our parking lot and updated septic. And guess what? We lost a driveway. We can't use our front entrance to our church building, the old one. So our plans really changed, major. We had to put in a biopond and an evaporation pond, and we don't even have wetland on our property. And I really want this board to look at this closely, at what you're seeing here. Now, the water that comes off of this farm property goes into Spring Lake and Pryor Lake through the ditch system. I love these lakes, I fish them, and I take care of them, and I take care of my property also. And I have 10 acres, and I am very good at taking care of my land and we use it appropriately. I don't think this is an appropriate way to use this land, straight out. And I think it would be irresponsible as landowners in this area to want to approve this, and I am totally against this approval of industrial. And it's more than industrial. This is like commercial, it's an industrial commercial that you're opening it up for waste to go into these beautiful lakes that we have in our area, and we enjoy the farms. I love looking at farms and the buildings and everything else. Scott County has been really good at letting people have their businesses in their homes and their properties, and if this was the keep at 10 acres, they would have plenty of room to leave some of their equipment there and have a home and take care of the way it looks for everyone. There are some properties in this area that are on the other side of State Highway 13, and that just gives you an idea of what it's going to look like. They have containers, shipping containers laying out there, and they're not allowed by zoning. They have shipping containers. Those aren't eyesore. And we can't keep, you know, if we say anything about it, then they'll say, "Well, can't you just let it go?" Well, this is what you'll see, is it just keeps on making our nice county not look very well, especially the hamlet. And I think it's a really nice-looking area right now, and if we could have homes there or keep it farming, would be a great, great decision to make. So I'm asking you to not approve this change. Thank you. I'll get to this, I signed in over here. Hello, my name is Doug Fontaine. I live at 5780 Starview Lane in Spring Lake Township. We purchased our property from a local developer in the mid-'80s, seeking dark skies and no, speaking dark skies and distant neighbors. Bush Town Road was a dirt road, and there were no lights from the casino. I have a story to share about protecting your space in Scott County and as your community grows, and it will grow. Luckily, we chose a long cul-de-sac to build our dream home. Our 21-home development started as an association with a strong HOA. All three protected our street from unwanted buildings and businesses activities that weren't approved of, as well as other dos and don'ts. One of the original homeowners had a small business and drove his 18-wheel truck to home from work each night. No one had a problem with that, with this helpful neighbor, who spoke often about having a secondary business location to work from. That never happened. After 30 years by law, our HOA timed out. Some of those protections disappeared at that point and has been retired. The neighbor has two dump trucks now, trailers, employees coming and going each day. It was also running unpermitted and not properly taxed as it beat up our road for 35 years. Our neighbor was reported to Scott County, who inspected his property and filed several violations, including a homemade, not-approved septic system and an unexpected diesel fuel storage system. Our neighbor made corrections and filed for an IUP with the county, as he should have done 35 years ago. This is where it gets interesting. Each affected neighbor received a letter from Scott County of the proposed IUP, and we had two weeks to respond. The burden of this disapproval fell upon the neighbors with little time to organize. Fortunately, at the 11th hour, with 75% petitioning against him, we negotiated the terms of the IUP with a neighbor, and that activity fell solely on us. Without common concerns and our prior engagements, in other words, we are acting as a 21-house community, okay? We would not have been able to find a compromise in such a short amount of time, putting in and therefore putting neighbor against neighbor. That's what this two-week thing caused, okay? A big fight was planned in an approval meeting at the county just like this. Instead, our Spring Lake Township Board presented the negotiated terms to the Scott County, and the IUP was granted under those terms. The neighbor's business is now inspected and taxed like his peers. Our groundwater is no longer threatened. We know that his business retires, when his business retires, the IUP will cease as part of the agreement. We didn't have to take legal actions, so everybody won and lost in this whole thing. We had a voice of the outcome because we are already organized, can react quickly. Spring Lake Township and Scott County now know the neighborhood's interests and goals, and they can make better informed neighborhood-specific decisions moving forward. This is an example of how unrelated businesses and growth can expand over time and how they rarely go away. Giving small business owners a place to expand and properly permitting permits backyards from becoming an expanding business that may not be regulated and hard to get rid
backyards from becoming an expanding business that may not be regulated and hard to get rid of. If all twenty-one houses on Starview engaged in similar activities, our street would lose its charm and our property's values would decline. In closing, I've never lived in Lydia, I don't know the struggles. I fear, I, I have the same kind of concerns that you people do. This is why I moved here with my family. In closing, Lydia, Lydia's been declining and declined since the railroad was routed through Prior Lake how many years ago, okay? Lydia was supposed to be the county seat, not Shakopee. That was the original intention, okay? The next railroad opportunity will be the new interstate ring that will run just south of Lydia. That's where two ninety-four is gonna be, running down two, running down two and up towards Chaska. The next opportunity, the next railroad, well, interstate, the county is thinking about that, you should too. IUPs can get out of control. Bigger businesses can be organized and engineered, in engineered zones. Organized business, bigger business can be put into engineered zones or scattered up and down Highway thirteen all the way to Prior Lake. I prefer designated engineered multi-use industrial zones on county roads or state roads and quiet, low-traffic residential neighborhoods. Change is gonna happen. It's gonna, it's gonna happen faster than we think. A lot long ago, forty-two was still dirt, okay? I suggest you be involved and collectively direct your future in what's of best interest for Lydia and your properties by supporting organized industrial locations reduced, by reducing IUPs and neighborhoods. Determine what, how you want Lydia to look tomorrow and work backwards to today. This is your chance to direct that growth. Blocking it will only prolong the inevitable, inevitable, and may, it may not be the outcome that really works best for you. Consider negotiating safe and roundabout into the project or something you're communicable, like a dog park, okay? Think how nice a coffee shop would be in Lydia where people could gather and talk about issues like this and discuss them as a group and act as a group. In closing, a well-designed Lydia will have a better property, will have better property values and gain amenities. A strong Lydia gives you a voice in county decisions. A strong Lydia tied to the township's financial health will protect all of us from being, all of us from being access, annexed by Prior Lake and the folks in Lydia by the folks in Jordan. Don't you know they would like to have access to Highway thirteen on their, on their books, okay? And, and by, from us being, you buy Jordan or skyrocketing property taxes. An industrial base reduces everyone's property taxes, groups individual businesses, and promotes positive community growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for signing in.
My name is Bob Urkel. Appreciate being, being here this evening. My wife and I moved out here and built a house out on Spring Lake in nineteen ninety-one, so this has been home for a long time, and you talked about forty-two as a dirt road from Burnsville to Savage. It was just a two-lane each direction that flooded out a bunch of times in the spring. So a lot of change over that period of time. And we moved out here because we wanted to live in the country, grew up in Mankato, and this was a, this is kind of a small Mankato when we moved out here. Having said that, we have our business in Prior Lake, and, and I also have land at, at twenty-three and two, about forty-eight acres of land out there, hunting land with a friend of mine. And we had electrical line go in along County Road Two, and it would have been my preference not to have that electrical line go in. But it'd also be my preference to have electricity. And that takes a higher precedence over having the electrical line. And there's a lot of things that transpire over time, and, you know, I feel for the people in Lydia because I wouldn't necessarily want an industrial park across the road from where I live. But at the same time, I would want an industrial park someplace. And I would want a plumber to be able to come to my house when I call, an electrician to come to my house when I have an electrical need and they need a business someplace. And so because of that, there will never be a perfect spot. Any spot you pick, you will find someone who says, I'd rather not have it here. Just like I would rather not have the electrical line running across our property on County Road Two and twenty-three. But at the same time, this is an important piece of, of our growth. This is an important piece from a taxation base. I'd like to control the tax liability that I pay on Spring Lake, just like everyone else that's living here in the county. And the building we own in Prior Lake pays quite a bit of tax, which helps lower the tax for housing and, and we've already talked about some of the challenges that Prior Lake has had, and I'd like to try to avoid that in Spring Lake Township, so thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, my name is Bobby, I thought I would follow Bob. Moved to Scott County from Prior Lake in two thousand and three, or Scott County from Hennepin County in two thousand and three. My wife's family has lived in Spring Lake Township since the seventies. And currently, we have two properties and four generations living there. I have my mother-in-law's mother living with us, taking care of her. I have my kids with me, I have my wife with me, and across the street, I have my in-laws with me. And what I would love to see in Scott County is an opportunity to be able to keep my family in Scott County, expand there. We own a window film company in Scott County, it's in Savage. It's Solar Shield, so if you, you know, need to call the window tint guy, like a plumber or, you know, usually it's not so urgent as a plumber, but in any case, we're pretty restricted as to what we can do in our place now. And I would love to expand my business for my sons and for their kids and potentially their kids. And this is just part of the process. You know, we think so often in terms of one year, we think in two years, we think of five-year plan. Well, I have a hundred-year plan currently for my family. And so that hundred-year plan actually includes staying in Scott County. And it's just going to happen that things get built. It's just going to happen that we are going to have to have industrial, we're going to have to have commercial because my kids are going to have kids who are going to have kids, and your kids are gonna have kids, and their kids are going to have kids. And they're gonna have to have places where they're gonna have to have businesses, and they can't all own one piece of property that's five acres or ten acres, have a house on it and a business in the backyard. That's, that's just not how things develop. And so I, I speak in favor of this plan because, you know, if it's not this plan today, it's gonna be another plan sometime in the near future, somewhere else, if not here in the near future. And so, yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I hope that in the future, Scott County can be very prosperous for all of our children and grandchildren.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Jesse Datsas. My parents, well, now us, owned the land across thirteen. It's a farm there. My mom found it back in nineteen eighty-eight. It was her dream Victorian house. And we moved there in nineteen eighty-eight and restored the house with my father. He passed this, this, this summer, and now we take care of my mom in that house. She has memory loss. And we've been quiet our whole lives, but we've kind of been a victim of, of this kind of stuff. I know the gravel road behind us needed to be expanded, and they stole twelve feet of our land to expand it, didn't give us any money. They cut all the trees down that my mom loved, big trees that hung over that road and threw the wood on our property. Then, as kids, we would play in the swamp back there as teenagers with our trucks. The DNR came, shut us down. We wanted to do a car dealership there. They said we could not have cars out there, so we can't have cars out there. And now this, I see this coming up, and I just shake my head as to why this is okay. And it wasn't okay for us to play in our own swamp. It was protected wetlands, couldn't do that. Couldn't have cars on our property and take our land. It's just, I'm against it. What I want is to take care of my mom until she passes and not look at buildings and industrial stuff. I want to be able to sit out in the front lawn where my dad used to sit on Sundays and look at a field like I have since nineteen eighty-eight. I'm not interested in growth, never have been. And everyone that moved from Prior Lake came out here, guaranteed to get away from the city. And now it's moving out here. If you want a business, if you want to expand, drive to Prior Lake, rent a building, just like everyone else. Not interested in this. I don't want it because as soon as that starts happening, Langford Way, which we live on, they will have to take land to make that, that road bigger, to get trucks in there, and they'll just take more of our land. Then, once they start filling this in, because it's wet, I've worked those fields, worked for the farmer, worked those fields, it's wet, there's springs there. Once they start filling that in, that's gonna push the water our way. It's gonna make our land water table go up. It's just, there's just a lot of factors, you may find a way around that. But I mean, either way, I'm against it, my family's against it, but it's just all I have to say, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. No applause, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board. I represent the Darielian Industrial Park, Krieger Industrial Park. We've been there since the beginning in two thousand when it was founded. We have our business there. It's a kind of unique gem. We, we wanted to expand our industrial park. I think we were here roughly a year ago, supporting Mr. Hanchus, his effort to expand. It's a great area to have our industrial park with the county there, the highways, everything there. The mayor of Prior Lake and his staff did a wonderful job of crushing our dreams of expanding it. Will not allow it. His idea is to put three hundred houses right next to our industrial park because they put infrastructure and sewer water out that way to support that. We were dead set against it. We thought we were moving forward and, and we got crushed. We'd like to have another spot in our township to be able to have businesses like ours go. We've been a business in the Prior Lake area for fifty-eight years. My mom was a lifelong resident of Scott County. Her family moved here in eighteen seventy-six, so we have deep roots here too. At that time, if they were to close the borders, none of us would be here right now. It continues to grow, and I'm pro-business. Without our industrial park, we would have been out of business twenty-five years ago, but we were able to continue on. And businesses like ours need a place to go, and this would give more businesses opportunities to grow and to have stuff in our county. Our business, our in-house employees is a hundred percent Scott County residents. Our employees that are out of house were thirty percent Scott County residents. And I believe that's our goal in our county, to retain employees in our, in our county. It's State Highway right next to this, good location for it. There's no road restrictions for springtime operations. As far as wetlands, we've been through it. In our park, water is not allowed to leave any faster than it's, we're holding water back more than what it ran out before we moved in there. It's monitored. We just had to replace a culvert at the farm next to our industrial park, and there is monitors along that creek checking our water constantly to make sure it's clean. And we are leaving our site cleaner than when it comes on our site. Septics. We have to put, we had to put in an industrial-sized septic system to handle commercial property with one bathroom and two sinks. And we have minimal use, and it's monitored. We have to follow the same code as residential. We have to have it pumped, it's monitored, it's checked. We have every biyearly inspections of our property to make sure we're in compliance with all county ordinances. We love our little neighborhood. It's a clean operation. All of our buildings are, I think, presentable, landscaped in such a way that everything is not visible from the road. And we are minimal traffic. You have your people coming in in the morning, working all day, leaving in the afternoon. It's not constant traffic. We do maintenance for municipalities. I would much rather plow snow in industrial area. You do not have the garbage cans on the road every day of the week. Mailbox, different situation. It is way easier to maintain an industrial area than a residential area. So I please ask you to vote in favor of this, to expand our industrial area in our township. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Andy Jensen. I have spoke here before. I'm speaking on behalf of Trevor Wenzel, who has seventy-four petitions signed against us. I live on Parkfield Avenue. We have our own issues because of an unregulated business. We have squad cars. Well, they work twice a day, seven days a week. I think we're down to one day a week right now, but we still have issues. That's where my trust issues come in with a lack of planning. Demcon came in here, hands down, fantastic presentation, right down to the trees they're planting, where they're planting, and why. This whole thing has changed a handful of times, and we haven't seen a solid plan of anything yet. It's a kind of like, we need to just approve each step at a time, and let's see what comes out of it. Everybody in here, with the exception of business owners who don't live in Lydia, anybody for this doesn't live in this area. I lived there. I grew up in Bloomington, where it used to be County Road Eighteen, and now it's one sixty-nine, and the bridge went in, and we have a casino in it. It became very industrial. So I bought a house on Fourth Avenue here, five twenty-three Fourth Avenue East, because I was trying to get out of it. Little too busy for me, so I kept on moving, raised some kids. Wife and I are down on Parkfield Avenue now. We are trying to get away from it. I am electrical contractor. If you need electrician, there's like, half these people have used me. There's electricians all over Prior Lake. You Google electrician near me, I'm like page seventeen. I'm small. I, I rent a place in Edina, there's places to use. You'll see my van come out of my house three times a day, but I live there, and it's my vehicle. There's plumbers in the area, there's, there's people everywhere, and people rent places that are more close to- And people rent places that are more close to the supply houses. And generally, there's not a lot of work in Lydia because there's only seventy-four of us, or whatever. I work in the metro, so that's where I lease land and keep some equipment and things like that. I, I do like living out here. Lydia's awesome. There's some neighbors much closer than this, to this development than me. I could probably see it if primetime wasn't in the way and I stood on top of a cornstalk. It's, it's that close for me, but it's not in my backyard. But I am definitely on my neighbor's side when this gets put in, touching their backyard. Like, if, if we're after taxpayer dollars because you can make a million bucks on this versus the three hundred thousand on the Lydia residents, I don't think it's in the government's best interest to sell something and saying, we need to make more tax revenue. It's, everybody agrees, maybe we need to be more efficient with what we already have, rather than just try to keep building more tax revenue. But more importantly, we need a better plan. Like, I'm opposed to this in general, so is everybody in here. But we're trying to push something through with the vote that was asked for before we even had comment, uh, public comment on this. We don't have a plan. Like, Demcon has a great plan. We have nothing. We're like, just vote, let's see what people want to build in our little community. I'm against it. And Trevor did the legwork, knocked on everybody's doors. These are, these are all the, uh, every sign piece is someone who lives in the Lydia area opposing this. If you want a copy of it, you can have this, or I could get it to you.
Give it to the secretary.
But that's, that's all I have to say. Like, without a plan, we don't just approve things to see what we get. That's, that's step one. What, what are you really going to build? The road changes and wetlands are negotiable depending on who, you know, I'm, I'm not a wetland guy, I'm an electrician. But we don't have a plan. What are, what are we trying to push through in such urgency? If you have land to sell, that's your right to sell it and it's someone's right to develop it. But when it's something like this and everybody in the area says no, there needs to be a plan. And there is zero plan. This isn't a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
I'm Ted Kloski, I'm Spring Lake Township. These are my people, all of them, I represent all of them. The township applied for this, not the property owner. We applied for it because we, as elected township officials, think this is important for Spring Lake Township. We spent the last five years working with the city of Prior Lake to work out that annexation agreement. And we worked very hard at trying to create that industrial park on the Hanchus piece, hoping to expand Dairy Lane. The city of Prior Lake was at the end of allowing that annexation agreement to expire. Once they give that up and we could keep Dairy Lane, if we got Hanchus done, maybe we could have expanded that industrial park further south onto the Ames property, okay? When that didn't come to fruition, we needed to find Plan B. We are going to be a permanent rural township, permanent rural residential. And I say that, and I say that, and I say that, and nobody seems to get it. We're unique. Other townships go away. A lot of Louisville's going to go away. We don't ever go away. We have to support ourselves for the next two hundred, three hundred years. We're not going away. The reason we picked this, it's on Highway thirteen, a state highway that runs all the way from like Watertown all the way up to one sixty-nine. We picked it because it's just north of County Road Eight, which is a, a big county road that's planned to be the two forty-two over time, and it goes all the way out to thirty-five and is going to continue on further to the west. This isn't a willy-nilly plan. This isn't something we're thinking about just for the next, you know, five or ten years. All the residents that live there, and, and I represent them, I hear you. That's why we've had so many meetings to listen to your concerns. But we have to look past just who's there today. Because you're not going to be there probably forever, but the township will be there forever. This kind of decision is what an appointed board is appointed to help make. This isn't supposed to be a popularity contest. Most people on a petition, that's the way we're going to side. No, you're not there to be a barometer. You're there to be leaders and see the bigger overall picture into the future. That's why we're asking for this. We at Spring Lake Township continue to pursue it. We tried it with Hanchus. We worked very hard with the city of Prior Lake to get them to change the annexation area so we could have some growth there. They wouldn't do it. It wouldn't happen, so this is the next best option for us. We're asking for even the benefit of the people in Lydia. Now, to, to jump around a bit, to go to what Andy says. No, this isn't our final plan. We're only asking for a, a, a land use amendment. The things that, that Mark brought in for Demcon, we have to do all that. We're just not at that level. That land was already zoned industrial. This one is zoned, uh, transition reserve. And the twenty acres to the north is zoned in the hamlet overlay, which is allowing businesses right now to happen there, if somebody applies for one. And it got, most of the, most of Lydia is all in the hamlet overlay. We took information from our residents, from Lydia, for four straight meetings, about two hours every meeting. If you look at that information and you're still down what most of their objections are, is for people operating their business out of their house. It isn't, I asked them, go look at Dairy Lane, tell me what's wrong with Dairy Lane. They come back and say, well, there's no houses around Dairy Lane. I know that, it wasn't the point. The point is, what's wrong with an organized, professional business park? What are your complaints about that? Well, nobody, nobody told me any, they didn't give me any objections about that. What they complain about is, somebody's got a transmission in the front yard. In Lydia, somebody has storage containers. One of you brought that up tonight, there's storage containers. I took pictures of those today. Yeah, I mean, one property, we got a whole bunch of dump trailers parked in the front yard, daily, okay? People are kind of doing that in Lydia. And they're saying, well, that's not really comparable uses. Across the street is the church. The church pretty much runs on a Sunday, kind of the only day they're really busy. The business park is going to be in and out during the week, and there's really no traffic on a weekend. So i- in my opinion, it's a compatible use. Right next to the church is a solar garden. Okay, that's kind of a business use, they, they had to get an IUP to have that. So I know the residents don't like the idea of it going there, because everybody's afraid of change. But with an industrial, commercial park and the rules be, be, behind screening and zoning and burns and light, you know, got to protect you from the lights and the noise and the traffic. All those things we have to deal with. The wetlands, the stormwater, the runoff, the quality of the water coming out, say, we have to do all that. What we're requesting of the board tonight is a way higher level of, is this, is this area good for what we're proposing? If it is, we'll, we'll propose to change the comp plan at the Met Council. If the, the Met Council approves it and the county commissioners approve it, then we have to go through all the steps, the rezoning, the planning, the application of IUPs or CUPs for the operation of the businesses. All the steps that Demcon had to do, we have to do also. They're just simply further down the steps. I watched that happen with Demcon, I thought, oh my God, that's what people are going to expect. And we're just not at that level yet. We, as the township, represent all you people. We don't want to make you mad, we don't want to make you upset, but you got to admit, it's right on Highway thirteen. There is not another spot in, in Spring Lake Township where we can do this, this well. And if you look at it, the, the, the houses are way up here. You get past this one lot and everybody's just looking at your backyard. This doesn't affect really anybody up in here in Lydia. And across the street, that's, that's business, next to country primetime, that's where they want to put the nomadic shemthing. That fits there. Nobody's going to take property from you and not pay you for it if there's a road expansion. I don't believe there is, but we don't, we're not allowed to do that. There's laws on that, you can't just take somebody's property.
Thank you, Ted.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Is there questions?
No, I, I think.
We have a lot invested in this.
Yes, and I think you did a good job of explaining the process.
Thank you very much.
People are not aware of that. If you've spoken before.
I have, but I, I.
Do you have additional information?
I do. I have an additional comment, I think.
That's fine.
And I think it's important to be heard, because.
Tell me, what's your name?
My name's Mariah Lillinger. We live in the little tiny square, right next to the industrial lot.
And your comment? Okay, take your time, take a breath.
I respect all the other residents, I respect your time, and I appreciate being able to speak again. When I first spoke, I didn't really know a whole lot about the project. I was trying to relay somebody else's words that they wanted me to say for them. And so today I have my own words to say, because I've had time to be at those other meetings, I've had time to think about it. And it's not that I'm against growth. I'm not against having an industrial lot, because quite honestly, I would rather have something industrial than like a restaurant or like businesses that people would want to break into off of the highway. I get that, right? I think my primary concern is that as things change, the little guy kind of gets left behind, right? Everyone talks about wanting to keep their families and Spring Lake Townships and bring their business there, and, and that's great. But what about the houses that already exist there, the families that already exist there? Think about how we're going to get pushed out for your businesses, for your growth, for your thriving. Think about the investments that we've made, the history that we want to keep. I'm thirty years old, I'm starting a family. I want to retire there, it's the house my husband grew up in. You know, I'm going to be there for sixty more years, if I don't get eminent domain. If, you know, they don't look at the rest of the property and say, oh, that would make great industrial, commercial land. Who do you think goes first? The little guy, the one without the money, the one without the businesses. And my issue is that I've repeatedly asked, how is the township, how is the county going to look at that and say, yes, okay, millions of dollars, but how are we going to protect the little guy? I've suggested, hey, have you considered, does all ten lots need to be, like, available for development? Look at the houses, right? Like, okay, houses start here, can we go back some feet? And I know that's a part of the planning, I know that's later on.
That's, that's not at this point.
Right, I, and I get that, and I understand that, and we've been told that numerous times, like, we're little kids and we don't understand the process, but we do. But to have some faith to be like, you know, actually, that is something to consider. You know, here are some, that's a good consideration, here are some other considerations that we could do to help protect your homes. Not just, we need to get the land approved so that we can sell it and so that we can have tax money and make the world, the county, millions of dollars, right? And I think we get frustrated because we get constantly talked down to, like, it doesn't matter, like, our homes don't matter, like, our small little Lydia community doesn't matter. And I think that's why we're frustrated. I think that's why you have the continued concerns. And I appreciate you hearing me, I'm trying not to be emotional. But it's not just about fighting change, it's about protecting what you've worked for. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Josiah Caston. I actually live directly across from this proposed industrial lot. And, uh, you know, to comment on our representative from the township, uh, you know, representative, you're not representing us. Because we're telling you no, and you're still trying to do it.
Okay.
So, that is, that's a lack of respect.
Address the board.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, I know.
But, uh, you know.
I want you to address the board, all right? You can tell us that.
One gentleman said, you know, the, uh, another, another area wanted to put, uh, houses right next to an industrial zone. That, uh, that didn't seem like it was a very logical thing to do. Well, this is putting an industrial zone of, right next to established houses. There's families there, there's kids there, this isn't, this isn't the community for that. You know, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, at this point, I think we're going to move forward here. At this point, I appreciate everyone who came up and spoke tonight and in September. When we have to make decisions as a, as a commission, we appreciate hearing from everyone on this. These are important decisions. What we're deciding tonight is a comp plan amendment to the general zoning. We've talked and got into a lot of things, and I've heard a lot of concerns about what's going to happen exactly with this. This is not there. We're way far off of that point right now. We're talking about the general plan use here. So just clarify that a little bit. At this time, I'll entertain a discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman. I think this is really a tough one, all, all the way around. Last time we heard from the Lydia residents that were very upset. I had a question I couldn't get answered from the staff. And my question was, I was told there were all sorts of meetings with the township and the Lydia residents. What came out of those meetings? Did any of the residents get moved to the point that they could agree with what the township wanted to do? I couldn't get an answer to it, but I think I probably, we probably did through that seventy-four people, which I think is all of Lydia, that has signed that document that our secretary has. So I, I want to first say this. Not too long ago, we had a very contentious meeting with a group of residents that did not want a commercial storage facility built across the road from them, if you remember that. All those houses were up, and they did not want it built there. And I will tell you that I voted to have that storage unit built because there was a big sign on that property that said, "Commercial property." The sign was there before the people built their houses. They knew what was coming. And for them to then come in and say, no, 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 you can't do this, when they had plenty of knowledge, when they were building their houses, that there could be something commercial going up next door, moved me to the point that I thought it was fair to vote for that commercial establishment. That is not what I'm hearing here. The, the problem I have is that you've got the residents of Lydia that have lived here a long time. They have been paying taxes for god knows how many years. And I think that they have a reasonable expectation that nothing like this was going to happen because it hadn't been proposed before and because our plan, our year, our plan came out and said that the property was going to be zoned this way. Okay, so for them to expect this was going to happen, I don't think is a reasonable expectation. I think this was a surprise for them. And the only way that this is going to happen is if we vote to change the zoning. And I, you know, they've been here forever, they've been paying taxes forever. I think they had a reasonable expectation to have things stay the same, the way they were. They've got the most skin in the game here, and I'm going to vote no. No, no, no.
We don't, we don't applaud. Thank you for.
Don't applaud, don't throw anything at anybody.
Yeah, if I couldn't, Jim. Yeah, I'm grateful that everybody came down, um, here tonight. I don't quite think it's, it's like, um, the young lady said, the woman said that, you know, no one listens to the little guy. Because I don't think that's true. We listened at a past meeting and we've listened tonight for over an hour about this, this proposed zoning change. That's what it is. As Commissioner Hanchus pointed out, it's a proposed zoning change. And I'm impressed by the amount of time that's been spent talking about the parcels, about what might go there, about how long that's down the road. And about the fact that in Scott County, we have a whole apparatus of things that have to happen before one brick or one board gets built. It's not inevitable. I mean, there's all kinds of processes that have to go on, and if any one of those is wrong, it doesn't go. We're not proposing to build ten units tonight, we're proposing to change some zoning. And I also have some affinity for the fact that, that Spring Lake. And I also have some affinity for the fact that Spring Lake Park is gonna be there for a long time. And one of the things that they need, they have to have, is revenue. And if they don't get the revenue, then they might not be there for that long of time. And I don't think anybody that lives there now would want that, but a healthy community life, and they are, the commissioner's right, they're one of the only ones in state. There aren't many of them. Most of them get a next, or made into somewhere else. And so this is kind of, in the way I see it, is a way, the beginning of a way, to have self-sufficiency for Spring Lake Park. And it's done pretty humbly, saying, but before we do anything, we wanna hear you. We're gonna have this public hearing. It's gonna go all the way to the Met Council and back again. Commissioners aren't gonna vote on it for three months. People that don't want this are gonna have more opportunities to speak against it. That's pretty good. I mean, that, I don't think of that as, no one listens to us, because we do. That's what we do, we listen to people. So I just wanted to say that, Ms. Kesh.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this whole business of rural business reserve is emotional. But over the long haul, we all know that, I'm sitting on this board that we put together some business parks that have done very well, and they've been very, very tight up to residential communities, and they will work if they're done properly with good planning. So based upon the information provided in the staff report and further discussion on this application, I support this land use plan amendment requested by Spring Lake Township for Lydia, Lydia Hamlet area, in advancing the request to the county board for preliminary action.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, and a second by Commissioner Robbins. At this time, is there any further discussion before I call for a vote? At this time, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Six to one. Thank you very much for everyone who came in this evening, who came in September to help us make this decision. I'm gonna wait for just a minute before we continue the meeting here, as the room clears. Thank you. Have a good night.
I don't think we've ever had.
You could say this.
What? I don't think we've ever had a meeting where everybody voted.
I'm a whole.
From the town.
I'll walk out, I don't even know if I understand what it is.
Science.
I know.
Well.
I don't have any trouble being the odd guy out.
No, no. I'm just gonna wait for like another 30 seconds till the room clears out a little bit here.
Yeah, I've been on the opposite side of the floor.
The nature of the beast.
Okay, the next item, if I'm, yeah, the next item is the election of officers. And we did the board of adjustments, so now we have to do the planning commission. So, I'll open nominations for Chair of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I nominate Commissioner Vanoff for Chair of the Planning Commission.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations at this time.
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Hensh's, second. Second by Commissioner. By me, by Commissioner Watson. I'll close nominations for Chair of Planning Advisory Commission. I will not call for a vote on Tom Vanhoff to be the Chair of the Planning Advisory Commission for 2025. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The next item is to open nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I nominate Commissioner Watson for Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations.
Make motion.
Motion by Commissioner Pika, second by Commissioner Zane.
Yep.
Okay, at this time, I call for a vote on nomination of Commissioner Watson for Vice Chair of Planning Advisory Commission for 2025. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And finally, I'll open nominations for Secretary of the Planning Advisory Commission for 2025.
That's me, too. I know.
Who is the new Secretary?
Who was it? Yeah.
I'll second.
I have a nomination of Commissioner Robbins for Planning Advisory Commission for 2025. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations. So move. Motion by Commissioner Robbins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Huber. Call for a vote. All in favor, vote. All in favor, vote aye. Aye. Opposed? We'll announce the new Secretary of the Planning Advisory Commission, Commissioner Robbins, for 2025.
But he said he couldn't take shorthand.
It's, no, he said it's non-readable.
I'll take a fast course, okay?
There you go.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to the planning manager update, and I'll go to Mr. Davis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll do this real briefly here. Some of the items that went to the county board, based on your recommendation, on December 17th, the county board did approve amending the Scott County zoning ordinance to regulate the cannabis land uses. They also adopted the new ordinance number 37 with the cannabis retail registration. So we are now prepared for the rollout of the cannabis industry. That did get delayed, you may have seen that in the local news. That's being pushed now into more of the summer, where we'll start seeing businesses apply for state license, and then that prompts then.
But that's all modeled up at the state level right now, isn't it?
At the moment, but I think it's the expectation it will be before this this summer.
Yeah, okay.
Also, on January 7th, the board did approve the preliminary final plat of Sand Hill Meadow. That was Shimick property owners. They approved a conditional use permit to lease space for rural industrial businesses in Louisville Township, and a conditional use permit to operate a tree and landscape contractor yard, also in Louisville Township. Quick note, the mileage reimbursement rate went up, so you'll see that in your.
Thank God.
Yep, 67 cents to 70 cents. The final thing, I have a handout. Every, every year, we do the end of year reporting and see what kind of planning and new home development we saw in the township. So I have some information for you there. I'll start with the, with the new lots. So this is the number of new lots, either commercial, industrial, or residential that were platted in the townships in 2024. And you can see them by township, but probably the most notable thing is, we only saw 16 new lots created, and that is significantly down from 2020, when we platted 63 lots. 2022, we platted 87 lots. That's a surprise.
I mean, you would have plowed more?
With the economy we've had and the growth in our cities, I thought we'd have a little more planning activity in our township.
I just think that, I agree with you that.
There's seven.
Worth the financing.
And then the number of new lots is another indicator of kind of the rural development activities. You can see there, we approved 51 new home sites in the townships. That's a little bit down, but more comparable to the numbers you see over the last five years. Yeah, so when you look at the new housing, Credit River, we no longer include that in the count. There, I think they've created a lot of plats and have approved a lot of homes in Credit River, yeah.
So, I mean, that has some impact on this number.
Yeah, yep, good point. Looking into next month, we'll have a couple of agenda items. I don't think they'll be as lengthy as tonight. And then we are looking at a workshop. We wanna talk about accessory dwelling units, or ADUs.
Good.
ADUs, accessory dwelling units, I think will be a topic for a workshop in February.
Okay, so that's in February, the workshop?
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Just two things I wanna say. Thank you to staff on the reports and to the commissioners. This one was, you know, a lot of emotion in this, and thank you for the patience in listening to people. I know it's, you know, I kinda lead more towards an open forum with people and letting people talk and stuff, and, but I think it's good, because I think they learn about the process, and we are the part of government, and people get an opportunity to come up and say their.
Yeah, but you know, it's the way it's supposed to work.
Yes.
There are so many places in this country and around the world where this doesn't go like this.
No.
And, and we do allow people to speak.
And we're doing a lot of steps here.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of steps, and so it works the way, it works the way it's supposed to work.
And I think, and I think, just from an overall planning and, and from a planning perspective, that the end result is better ultimately. We do better projects, we put better things in, and ultimately, I think it comes out better for the community. So the time here is not lost.
Well, and just one final, those developers, the people that develop that land that we do, they're gonna, I mean, they're gonna be walking pretty carefully, because they were here tonight and they heard all of that, and they, they're not gonna go very fast. I mean, they're gonna try to get the neighborhoods to support.
And to your point, Mr. Chair, of those five comp plan amendments that we've gone through since 2019, I don't think any of them got settled in one night. I think we had to table and revisit all of them with a, with a large packed room in front of you. So these are tough, these are tough requests.
Well, I think it seems like a long, arduous process, but my point is, I think it's, there's a benefit to it at the end. You know, we always can't see it, sitting here at night, but you know, you look down the road and you say, oh, that turned out pretty well. Well, that's the reason. It's all of this input from people, I think, and I think that impacts the decisions ultimately. And you're right, of everybody is who's in the room, because the developers are in the room, you know, the township board's in the room, everybody's in the room. And so I just wanna say thank you to everyone on the commission, to the staff.
Yeah, thanks to Brad. That was, you had to kind of point there, thanks.
You know, that's, it's, I know it's a long night and everything, but I think there's a benefit at the end of the day. So, with that.
I'll make a motion that we.
Wait, Mr. Robinson, second. We are adjourned.
What the plan called for.